Good evening, everybody. Before we begin, a couple of things I want to just make an announcement. If you happen to be here, some of you folks have been here before we stepped back there, but as you saw the council come out from the room behind us, we just had a public facility authority meeting, which is basically another committee that the council is on. We had a, to discuss our lease, the city hall lease, but it was an open meeting, the doors were open, but it was no big deal. But just anybody saw the council all walking out of the back there, that's what was taking place. And actually, we will reconvene that meeting later, and it's a, it's a, it's a published in an open meeting, too. Anybody is welcome to come back there when we do that. And before we get started, is Pastor Brent Deakins here?
We want to welcome him. He's from Reach One Church in Milton, Georgia, and he's going to lead us in the invocation.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Sure.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and thank you for each of these council members that are serving our city and our community. Lord, I pray that you just give them wisdom tonight as they look over these issues and topics. I pray that you give them unity and deep understanding as to how to make great decisions for our community. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and to share with each other, building a great community together. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Deakins, for being here. We appreciate that. Now, I will start our formal meeting, and I'd like to call the regular meeting for the Milton City Council for Monday, October 21st, 2013, to order. If, Sudi, if you'd please make any announcements and call or roll, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call or roll for the October 21st, 2013, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment or consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk, staff, prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within this chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call or roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and again, want to welcome everybody here tonight. We appreciate you coming out. Next item is our meeting agenda. I'm going to ask for approval of the agenda, but I want to, would like to add an executive session to discuss land acquisition. Is there anything else that anyone would like to add or change to the agenda? Staff? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting agenda as prepared by staff with the executive session to discuss land acquisition.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Koontz, second by Councilmember Hewitt. For the approval of the meeting agenda with the addition of an executive session for land acquisition, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Sudi. Okay, next item's public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Now, that means when I say for any item without their scheduled hearing, there's also public comment for each item that has a hearing tonight, too, but that statement is based on general public comment. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks. Do we have any general public comment?
We do not, sir, no general public comment.
Okay. All right, then, let's move on to the consent agenda.
Our first item under consent agenda, approval of the October 7th, 2013, regular city council meeting minutes. This is Agenda Item Number 13-242, and our second and final consent agenda item this evening, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Milton and Fulton County Board of Education for the use of Northwestern Middle School, Agenda Item Number 13-243.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second.
Okay, I've got a, motion for approval by Councilmember Luss, second by Councilmember Koontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we don't have any reports or presentations or first presentations, so if we could move on to our public hearing, Sudi, if you don't mind, send me the first item.
First item is consideration of issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Sequoia Golf North Atlanta LLC, doing business as Atlanta National Golf Club, located at 350 Tournament Players Drive, Milton, Georgia 30004. The applicant is Robin Spradlin, consumption on premises, wine, malt beverages, and distilled spirits. This is Agenda Item Number 13-244, Ms. Stacy Inglis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This applicant, along with the agenda item underneath this, both of these are just a change of ownership. The establishment already has a consumption on premises license, and this is just changing ownership, formality. They've followed all of the requirements of the law, and we just request that you approve.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this area?
We do not, sir.
Okay, I'll close the hearing, and then is there any questions for Stacy on this? Again, this is just an existing license, a change of ownership. Okay, if there's no questions, I'll just ask for a motion.
I make a motion to approve Agenda Item 13-244.
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Longoria, for approval of this item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Okay, city clerk, would please say on the next item.
Next item is consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Sequoia Golf North Atlanta LLC, doing business as White Columns Country Club, located at 300 Clubhouse Drive, Milton, Georgia 30004. The applicant is Robin Spradlin, consumption on premises, wine, malt beverages, and distilled spirits, Agenda Item Number 13-245, Ms. Stacy Inglis.
Yes, same as I just discussed, change of ownership. The applicant already has the license, the establishment already has the license, just change of ownership, requested you approve.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this one?
We do not, sir.
All right, I'll close that hearing and open up for a motion or any questions.
Mayor, I'll move to approve Agenda Item Number 13-245.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Luss, second by Councilmember Koontz, for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Sudi, if you'll please call the next item.
Our next item is our zoning item, and I'll read the rules for that first. At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. The city clerk will be keeping track of the time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable before beginning their presentation. The Planning Commission has heard this rezoning agenda item, and recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. The applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should be submitted to the Community Development Department to be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made, within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government which will consider the application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the Planning Commission meeting. A violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the Planning Commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our zoning item this evening is consideration of U13-02 VC 13-03 Deerfield Parkway West Side Crescent Communities LLC for a use permit to allow the construction of 256 multifamily residential units and related accessory uses, Section 64-1839, and a two-part concurrent variance. First, provide 100% of the site for apartments, Chapter 64, Division 5.A, .4, .6, .6, .A, .2. And, second, to delete the requirement to provide a minimum of 300 cubic feet of separate contiguous storage space shall be provided to each dwelling unit. This is Agenda Item Number 13-231. The council heard this at first presentation, October 7th, 2013, during the regular meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This map shows the subject site in red. It's a proposal for 256 apartment units. The subject site contains 21.368 acres, which are undeveloped. The applicant seeks a use permit for 256 apartment units with one and two-bedroom units and two concurrent variances, which I will refer to later. It incorporates a farmer's market on the site for public use. The existing zoning is T6, which is the Deerfield Highway 9 Form-Based Code overlay district that requires a use permit when apartments are requested. The subject site is located within a regional activity center of the Highway 9 Georgia 400 Master Plan Livable Centers Initiative, LCI study approved on April 23rd, 2012. The subject site continued. The staff notes the Deerfield Highway 9 Form-Based Code requires the following when an applicant requests to develop apartments. Under Section 4.6.6, specific to zones T4 Open, T5, and T6, A, apartments shall only be permitted subject to a use permit as follows. One, in buildings where the entire first story is used for non-residential functions or residential lobbies, leasing offices, fitness centers, or multipurpose rooms serving the residential function. Or two, on sites where more than 50% of the total floor area is dedicated to office, retail, or lodging functions. Previous action on the subject site, Crescent Communities LLC previously requested to rezone from C1 Community Business to OI Office Institutional and to A Medium Density Apartments. This request was denied by the mayor and city council on September 6th, 2012. The applicant exercised their right to appeal the decision of the mayor and city council to the Fulton County Superior Court. On May 20th, 2013, the Fulton County Superior Court ordered that the plaintiff's application be remanded to the City of Milton to process a new application for a use permit for apartments and other variances or warrants under the new Deerfield Highway 9 Form-Based Code within 60 days of the said order. This is the reason that the applicant's request has been filed for the same request on the subject site. And here is the Deerfield Highway 9 LCI plan, and you see the subject site is in that pink area, which is denoted on the LCI plan as a regional activity center. And I want to just define for you a little more about what an original activity center is, and that connotes high density, mixed-use, workability, interconnectivity. And that was the intent of the LCI plan for this particular area of the Deerfield area. So when we come to the new zoning that was put in place to implement the plan, you will see the T6 is the area that is really enacting the intent of the regional activity center with all of the facets that I just mentioned to you. The intent of the plan is all reflected in that T6 zoning. The revised site plan was submitted on October 18th, 2013, and then another revised site plan to that was submitted on October the 2nd, 2013, where the parking calculations were revised, and that really is the only difference between the two site plans. In terms of the site plan analysis, based on the applicant's revised site plan submitted to the Community Development Department on October 2nd, 2013, staff offers the following considerations. Under the Deerfield Highway 9 Form-Based Code standards, Chapter 64, Division 5.A, based on detailed review of the revised site plan and architectural elevations by city staff, including the city architect, the proposed 256-unit apartment development meets all the standards except for the item discussed below in VC 13-03 Part 1. It is staff's opinion that the site and architectural plans have accomplished the overall goal of form-based development by meeting the multiple standards of the code. Staff has included the architectural elevations at the end of the report. In addition, a condition has been included referencing the elevations if the mayor and council choose to approve the use permit. VC 13-03 Part 1, to provide 100% of the site for apartments. The applicant is requesting a concurrent variance to Chapter 64, Division 5.A, .4, .6, .6, .A1, that requires the following. A, apartments shall only be permitted subject to a use permit as follows. One, in buildings where the entire first story is used for non-residential functions or residential lobbies, leasing offices, fitness centers, or multipurpose uses, or multipurpose rooms serving the residential function. Or, two, on sites where more than 50% of the total floor area is dedicated to office, retail, or lodging functions. The applicant proposes the entire development to be developed as apartments, so that is the variance he's looking for. It is staff's opinion that the applicant has not demonstrated that, one, relief if granted would not offend the spirit or intent of this zoning ordinance. It is the intent for this area of Deerfield to be developed with higher densities so that a mix of uses can be provided for the use of current and future residents and employees. Within the Deerfield Highway 9 Form-Based Code, the intent states that the Deerfield Highway 9 area is the focal point for high-quality mixed-use development in the City of Milton as established in the Highway 9/Georgia 400 Master Plan Livable Centers Initiative and the City of Milton 2030 Comprehensive Plan. And additionally, that within the Deerfield Highway 9 area, ordinary activities of daily life should be able to occur within walking or bicycling distance of most dwellings. Two, there are such extraordinary and exceptional situations or conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property that the literal or strict application of this zoning ordinance would create an unnecessary hardship due to size, shape, or topography, or other extraordinary and exceptional situations or conditions not caused by the variance applicant. The applicant states in the letter of intent that to meet the requirements stated above that, in order to provide such accessory non-residential uses, such building space would be required to be developed at an economic loss, which would have the effect of having the development cost exceed the income that could be generated from any proposed development of the property. Finally, a hardship arises in providing for 50% of the total floor area as retail office or lodging functions because there does not exist a market for such functions at this location. It is staff's opinion that economic hardships do not meet the standard of the variance consideration outlined above. Three, relief if granted would not cause a substantial detriment to the public good and surrounding properties. By not implementing the requirement of mixed-use for the site, it negates the plan's intent to ensure that ordinary activities of daily life should be able to occur within walking or bicycling distance of most dwellings and provide an overall cohesive development for live and work for the community. Thus, the requirement for the mixed-use component when developing apartments is required. Therefore, staff recommends denial of VC 13-03 Part 1. Apartment Development Standards for the Use Permit, Section 64-1839. The proposed development meets all the standards for a use permit except for the following. A minimum of 300 cubic feet of separate contiguous storage space shall be provided for each dwelling unit, Section 64-1839 subsection 8. VC 13-3 Part 2 is another concurrent variance, and this one is to delete the requirement to provide a minimum of 300 cubic feet of separate contiguous storage space shall be provided for each dwelling unit. The applicant is requesting to delete the above-required storage space for each dwelling unit. It is staff's opinion that the applicant has not demonstrated that, one, relief if granted would not offend the spirit or intent of this zoning ordinance. The use permit development standards for apartments require a minimum of 300 cubic feet of separate storage space. The request does, in fact, offend the intent of the requirement by requesting that all the storage space be deleted for each unit. Two, there are such extraordinary and exceptional situations or conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property that literal or strict application of this zoning ordinance would create an unnecessary hardship due to size, shape, or topography, or other extraordinary and exceptional situations or conditions not caused by the variance applicant. It is staff's opinion that the number of units can be decreased to accommodate the additional square footage requirement, to accommodate the additional square footage required by the requirement of providing 300 cubic feet of separate storage. Three, relief if granted would not cause a substantial detriment to the public good and surrounding properties. It is staff's opinion that this development standard facilitates an adequate storage area so that the storage of belongings will not occur on porches or balconies, which would cause a negative impact on nearby occupants and properties. Thus, the development standard for providing storage space is required. Therefore, staff recommends denial of VC 13-03 Part 2. In terms of pedestrian circulation, the proposed site plan indicates a comprehensive internal pedestrian network throughout the development via required sidewalks adjacent to the proposed roads and within the natural area to the north. Staff recommends that the paths within the natural area be constructed of previous materials and be a minimum of 10 feet wide. In addition, there are sidewalks that provide connections with the pedestrian sidewalk on Deerfield Parkway, where there are two existing MARTA bus stops available to residents and visitors. Staff will require that the applicant provide bus stop shelters without any signage to be installed at the designated MARTA bus stops along Deerfield Parkway. The pedestrian network and bus stop shelters will assist in meeting the vision of improved pedestrian interconnectivity stated in the Highway 9 Georgia 400 Master Plan Livable Centers Initiative. These additional requirements will be reflected in the recommended conditions. City Arbor's comments. The site appears to have been selectively timbered within the past 15 years or so. The plan shows preserving some of the mature trees in the northern part of the project. Per the revised site plan, the applicant indicates approximately 10 specimen trees are proposed to be removed equating to 128.1 tree-density units to be recompensed. Recompense required will be 183 4-inch caliber hardwood/canopy trees. Specimen trees removed or preserved may vary. Final count will be done during the land disturbance permit process. Public Works Department Transportation. The applicant updated the traffic study, and there have been no significant changes in the results since the original study in 2012. The results of the traffic study indicate that for both existing and future conditions, the intersection of Morris Road and Deerfield Parkway does not operate at an acceptable level of service in the peak hour. A project currently under construction by the City of Milton for Deerfield Parkway and Morris Road will improve the overall operations in the base and design years. The City of Alpharetta has recently reconstructed the intersection of Wimford Parkway and Deerfield Parkway as part of the West Side Parkway extension volumes. This will also improve the overall peak level of service. In terms of the impact from the Fulton County Board of Education, you can see, according to this chart, that all three schools are overcapacity, and so they would negatively be impacted by the amount of students to be generated from this project. The fiscal impact model, the following slide depicts the result of the fiscal impact model for the proposed project. The assumptions include that the first year of permit revenue was approximately $120,000, which included both building permit and land disturbance permit fees for the entire project. And you can see on this that there is a, over 20 years, there is a negative amount of $7,799,530 in terms of costs versus revenue generated from this project. Public involvement. There was a community zoning information meeting held on August 27, 2013. The applicant was present at the community zoning information meeting held at Milton City Hall. 10 people were in attendance. Attendees questioned why the development was back when it was denied last year. Staff addressed that concern. In addition, there were concerns about increased traffic, reduction in their home values, public safety, and required interconnectivity to the prize development. City of Milton Design Review Board held a courtesy meeting on this application on September 9th, 2013. The following comments were made at that meeting. They requested to delete the interconnectivity requirement to the adjoining lot to the west prize for pedestrian safety, to update the traffic study for Deerfield, and consider adding a bike lane. There was a preference expressed for a flat roof and rule of a low-pitched roof. The current roof pitch is proposed at 4:12. The architectural character would replicate the crabapple area vernacular, and that Milton has established different development nodes. This site plan does a good job of representing the new block structure of TC Transx Zone as outlined in the Form-Based Code. They would also like to integrate some commercial uses on the ground floor. These uses should be placed in the entry block at a minimum. Suggested uses Starbucks, laundromat, deli, et cetera. These commercial retail uses should be open to the general public to help support their longevity. Future reuse of the buildings must be considered. Ground floor levels must be designed with base sizes and column grids that would accommodate future conversion to commercial retail applications. This includes the floor height and exterior appearance, window placement, awnings, et cetera. The cubic storage, the cubic space story requirement should be maintained as it offsets the problem of occupants utilizing the balconies for storage. Planning Commission reviewed this application on September 25th, 2013. They recommended denial of the application, six to zero, and also denial of the two concurrent variance requests against six to zero. The Planning Commission made the following comments regarding your final vote to recommend denial of the use permit and the two-part concurrent variance. One, the proposed development doesn't meet the requirement of the Form-Based Code for mixed-use and goes against all the work the community has contributed to the Form-Based Code. Even though, and two, even though there was a high demand for apartments, the city's vision is truly mixed-use. Just because apartments are economically viable, the Planning Commission does not want to give up the vision of the city. Public Participation Plan and Report. The applicant has met the requirements of the Public Participation Plan. The applicant submitted the first plan report on September 11, 2013, and an update on October 4th, 2013, to the mayor and city council meeting. The public participation meeting was held on September 9, 2013, at 6:00 p.m. There were four members of the community in attendance. In the interest of the public health, safety, and welfare, the mayor, I'm sorry, I'm moved on now to use permit considerations. In the interest of the public health, safety, and welfare, the mayor and city council may exercise limited discretion in evaluating the site proposed for use that requires a use permit. In exercising such discretion pertaining to the subject use, the mayor and city council shall consider each of the following as outlined in Section 64-552 of the zoning ordinance, use permit considerations. Staff has reviewed said items pertaining to the subject use and offers the following comments. Use permit consideration number one: Whether the proposed use is consistent with the land use or economic development plans adopted by the mayor and city council. The Highway nine Georgia four hundred master plan identifies the subject site and surrounding areas as a regional activity center. This area is bounded by Georgia four hundred to the east, Webb Road to the north, and the properties adjacent to Deerfield Parkway and Wimwood Parkway to the west and south. The intent for the plan is to facilitate development with higher densities in the regional activity area. This includes higher densities for residential office and commercial developed in a vertical mixed-use development. The proposed development of two hundred fifty-six units at twelve units per acre with no other type of non-residential development is inconsistent with this plan for the area. Compatibility with land uses and zoning districts in the vicinity of the profit, of the property for which the use permit is proposed. The applicant is requesting a two hundred fifty-six unit multifamily development at density of twelve units per acre. As indicated below, the adjacent and nearby zonings are inconsistent with the proposed development. Staff notes that there are townhomes to the northeast but of lower density of seven point three-nine units per acre, which is incompatible with the requested twelve units per acre. The nearest multifamily development is on the north side of Webb Road and west of Deerfield Parkway. Three, whether the proposed use may violate local, state, and/or federal statutes, ordinances, or regulations governing land use. The proposed use is in violation of the use permit development standard that requires storage areas and in violation of the Deerfield Highway nine Form-Based Code that requires the developer to provide a minimum of fifty percent of other uses other than apartments or the first floor to be non-residential. Four, the effect of the proposed use on traffic flow, vehicular, and pedestrian along adjoining streets. It is staff's opinion that the proposed use may cause an increased burden on the streets and transportation facilities, utilities, and schools. However, the increase should be mitigated with the recommended conditions that provides for interconnectivity between uses. The location and number of off-street parking spaces. The following chart illustrates the parking required by Section sixty-four dash fourteen ten of the City of Milton zoning ordinance for the proposed uses. And you can see at the bottom of the chart that there are four hundred fifty-six required spaces and four hundred fifty-six are provided. The table above indicates a total of four fifty-six parking spaces required and provided in the revised site plan submitted on October second, two thousand thirteen. Staff notes that the revised site plan dated September eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, presented by the Planning Commission, reflected a total of four hundred four spaces on the site plan utilizing the allowable administrative reduction in parking spaces. A condition will be included in the recommended conditions to reflect the reduced number of parking spaces from four fifty-six to four oh four if the mayor and city council choose to approve this petition. The amount and location of open space: The proposed development meets the required amount and location of open space as listed in the development standards of the use permit for apartments as well as the requirements of the Deerfield Highway nine Form-Based Code. Seven, protective screening: The proposed development meets the required amount and location of protective screening as required with the Deerfield Highway nine Form-Based Code. Hours and manner of operation: The proposed development is a use that is utilized twenty-four hours a day. The applicant has stated they will work with the city regarding the proposed farmer's market and the specifics of how it would operate if approved. Outdoor lighting: If the applicant's letter, in the applicant's letter of intent, the applicant states that the development will be in strict compliance with the outdoor lighting standards contained in the Deerfield Highway nine Form-Based Code. Ten, ingress and egress to the property: The proposed development shows two entrances where the existing full accesses are located on Deerfield Parkway, one on the southern end of the property and one in the central area. In addition, there is an additional right-of-way, right-in, right-out access on the northern end of the development. These entrances further the goal of interconnectivity and discourage dead-end streets. The site plan provides an interparcial connection with the northwest and property line adjacent to the Fries' electronics parking lot. This type of connection is recommended and illustrated in the Highway nine Georgia four hundred master plan and the Deerfield Highway nine Form-Based Code. The intent is to decrease the size of the super block to encourage vehicular interconnectivity and enhance utilization of excess parking lots. In addition, the site plan indicates interparcial access along the southern property line to the undeveloped office property. These access requirements will be reflected in the recommended conditions if the mayor and city council choose to approve this petition. Conclusion: The proposed two hundred fifty-six multifamily development is inconsistent with the policy's intent of the City of Milton Highway nine Georgia four hundred master plan and the previous city council action on the subject site. Therefore, staff recommends denial of U thirteen dash oh two. In addition, staff recommends denial for VC thirteen dash oh three, parts one and two. If the mayor and city council choose to approve these requests, a set of recommended conditions is provided as follows. And these conditions are: If this petition is approved by the mayor and city council, it should be approved for a use permit for apartments conditional subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the mayor and city council. One, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the subject property as follows: A, no more than two hundred fifty-six total dwelling units at a maximum density of twelve units per acre based on the total acreage zone, whichever is less. B, unit size shall be one hundred twenty-eight one bedrooms and one hundred twenty-eight two bedrooms. Two, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following: A, to the revised site plan received by the Community Development Department on October second, two thousand thirteen, said site plan is conceptual only and must meet or exceed the requirements of the zoning ordinance, all other applicable city ordinances, and these conditions prior to the approval of a land disturbance permit. In the event the recommended conditions of zoning cause the approved site plan to be substantially different, the applicant shall be required to complete the concept review procedure prior to application for a land disturbance permit, unless otherwise noted herein and compliance with all conditions shall be in place prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. Three, to the owner's agreement to the following site development considerations: A, to provide two bus shelters at MARTA bus stops without signage as approved by the City of Milton Design Review Board. B, provide a maximum of four oh four total parking spaces. C, to construct the buildings as depicted in the elevations and renderings dated September seventeenth, two thousand thirteen. D, internal multi-use trails shall be a minimum of ten feet wide or as approved by the Public Works Department. One, internal multi-use trails shall be constructed of previous materials as approved by the Community Development Department. Four, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following requirements, dedication and improvements. Dedicate at no cost to the City of Milton prior to the approval of a certificate of occupancy sufficient land as necessary to provide the following: One, provide at least twelve feet of right-of-way from the back of curve of all budding road improvements or one foot from the back of sidewalk, whichever is greater along the entire property frontage, as well as allow the necessary construction easements while right-of-way is being improved. Two, installation and modification of the following transportation infrastructure to be installed in accordance with Chapter forty-eight, street sidewalks, and other public places of the City of Milton Code of Ordinances. One, southbound right turn lanes on Deerfield Parkway at all site driveways. A, any existing sidewalk or utilities in conflict with new turn lane shall be relocated. B, any new required entrances shall meet the City of Milton Code of Ordinances and Astro Guidelines as approved by Milton Public Works and shall conform to the following: One, the Deerfield Parkway driveway shall provide a minimum of one hundred feet or the ninety-five percent Q length, whichever is greater of uninterrupted access. This distance shall be measured from the edge of the through lane on Deerfield Parkway to the edge of any interior drive aisle or parking space. Two, provide two full access drives and one right-in, right-out access on Deerfield Parkway. C, at the time of development of the property to the south, a fifty-foot access easement is required along the southern driveway from Deerfield Parkway right-of-way to the location on the south property line where interparcial access will be provided to the property to the south. One, location of access to be, to shared drive shall be at a minimum distance of the ninety-five percent percentile Q for the combined condition with full, with future development or one hundred feet, whichever is greater. D, provide a fifty-foot access easement free of any structures or utilities for vehicular and pedestrian interparcial access on the northwest property line, as coordinated with property owner to the north and as approved by Milton Public Works. Five, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following: A, the stormwater management facility shall comply with the City of Milton stormwater requirements and shall utilize earthen embankments where possible. Wall structures are not encouraged. If wall structures are proposed, they must meet the acceptable design standards of the Department of Community Development. One, where side slopes for stormwater management facility are steeper than four to one, the facility shall have a six-foot-high, five-board equestrian-style fence with two-inch-by-four-inch welded wire constructed around it, or as may be approved by the Director of Community Development. And that is my presentation.
Okay. Now, if anyone had a specific question for Kathy while she's still standing here, I'll allow you to ask it. If not, we'll, we'll ask for, since we're under public ear and those to come up and speak. Is there any question at this point from, for Kathy? My counsel. Okay.
Thank you very much.
And we'll open up for public comments, and we'll start out with those that are in support of this application.
Our first speaker comes from Mr. Pete Hendricks.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Pete Hendricks, sixty-eight-five Lake Forest Drive. Before we begin the presentation, I would request of you, given the significant rework that has been done vis-à-vis the application that lies in front of you, we would ask for more time for the presentation. Typically, in most jurisdictions, you have ten minutes proper for the application and ten for any associated requests. Not that we would need a total of thirty minutes, the application proper, the two variances, but if we could have up to twenty minutes, it would be appreciated. I think it might be a benefit to y'all. Bob Preston, I can tell you, based on the last presentation we had, we used up the ten minutes, just taking you through the site plan and explaining to you how the effort has been there, as staff has recited to you in your, in your report, to be compliant other than the two variance requests. So if you could consider that, we would appreciate it. We could have a total of twenty minutes.
And I don't necessarily have a problem at any time, extended time, if somebody needs it, I'll leave that up to the council if we want to do that or let you make your presentation if it looks like you're going to run over. Be glad to look at it then, or if council wants to consider that now, adding another ten minutes to each side.
Okay, Lou.
That's fine. Majority council is okay with that, and...
Mayor, can we, can we have a motion and vote on that and extend it to both sides?
Right. Now, I'll open, I'll ask for a motion to extend ten minutes additional to each side, both those in, in support and, and not support of this.
Mayor, I move that we extend the presentation time limit by ten minutes for both sides.
Second.
Okay. I've got a motion from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Kudz, to add an additional ten minutes to both sides of this application. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. That doesn't mean you have to take all additional ten minutes.
Thank you. I'll be quick in my opening comments. Kathy has articulated for you what the request is. I think we all know exactly what the request is and why we're back with the application.
Excuse me one second, Mr. Hendricks. David, is there something we can do, for some reason, that we're getting some echo with us?
She's walked through the application and the reason that we're, we're back in front of you. I would like to hit on the, the meat of the thing, which are the two variance requests. The site plan that Bob Preston is going to work you through, because of the extraordinary constraints of the topography on that property and being able to deliver the grid system that the new Form-Based Code is, is requiring, has resulted in over two and a half million dollars in extra grating and retaining wall activity that was not present in the site plan that was last in front of you that you all denied the application on. So you couple that extraordinary cost and expense with a thought and idea of trying to carry what is not market receptive in the sense of office and retail. It is just, it's prohibited, and it folds you in when you go under your requirements for, for variance consideration, and it talks to shape, size, topography of the property and, and exceptional situations and conditions not caused by the variance applicant, and that's the situation in which we find ourselves. In addition to that, on the three hundred cubic feet per unit, there will be, it's not a, a zero storage area, and Jake Coran, when he gets up here, will be able to walk you through that. There will be storage area, it's just that the three hundred cubic square feet, or cubic feet, is excessive. The Crescent folks have been at this business for well over five years, and they have an understanding and appreciation of what the market, the market needs. With that, I'm going to let Jay step up, and also, I know he's going to want his office fellow, John Bell, to have some comment for you. They will follow Bob Preston, who's going to walk you through the, the modified and revised site plan, the site plan that you've got in front of you.
Good evening. Bob Preston, five-five-one-five Red Barkway, Dumbarton, Georgia. I'm with the Preston Partnership, with the architects for the project before you. I've only got four slides that I'd like to see if I can walk you through. I wanted to...
All on target.
Yeah, don't encourage. And I wanted to see if I could quickly walk you through and maybe just let you know how hard we have worked for this project to meet your new Form-Based Code and the architectural standards. I will say, we've worked very hard, I feel, with, with the city, with city staff through numerous meetings that we've had over the summer, to design a project that I feel meets just about every aspect of your new Form-Based Code. Those meetings have been frequent, they have been very productive, I feel staff has been very supportive, and I think we have made fabulous progress on the project. There is a site plan in front of you, which I'll talk about quickly. You, you have a requirement in your new code that is a block structure requirement. So whenever we design a project, you have to first and foremost look at this block structure, and if you have more than four acres, which we do, obviously, then we have to meet what is called a thoroughfare network defined by these blocks. It's like a network of publicly accessible roads, and we're in the T-six zone, which is the most dense and urban of all your zones, and there is a maximum limit on the size of the blocks, it's three thousand two hundred linear feet. And if you apply that to this twenty-one-acre site, we end up with seven blocks. And the genesis of the blocks goes back to, on the southern end, which is on the left-hand side of your screen, the southern end of the site, we've got blocks that are more civic-oriented, there is a civic requirement. We've got recreational blocks, we've got some town square and arrival-oriented blocks, and on the northern end, we have residential-oriented block. So the site plan, because of this breakdown in blocks, it ends up being far more formal and far more urban, which is very much the intent of the T-six zone. And it results, like I say, in these thoroughfares, these public streets that run east-west and north-south. We have three points of access, which Kathy alluded to on Deerfield, two full curb cuts, one right-in, right-out, and we have connectivity to adjacent parcels on both the southern end and also on the rear of the site to, to the Fries' parking lot that is at the rear, all of which are encouraged, obviously. We have pedestrian connectivity internal of the site, which is a requirement of the new Form-Based Code. We have a density, as Kathy said, of two hundred and fifty-six units, which is twelve units to the acre, which is the maximum that we are allowed. We have an eighty percent maximum lot coverage, we're actually at seventy, so we conform to that. We meet the parking requirement, four hundred and fifty-six spaces with no variance requests, and there's a four hundred-foot limit that that parking must be within reach of each dwelling unit, which we also meet. The buildings are mostly three-story, there's a couple of three-four splits. There is eighty feet of grade elevation of difference on this site, so it does make it a very challenging site. There's a civic space requirement of ten percent, which is just over two acres, two point one-four acres. two acres, 2.14 acres, which we've exceeded. And we've shown and incorporated in three different areas on the site plan. We have a civic square, which is more formal on the southern end of the site. And we have a community space along Deerfield Parkway. And we have about half an acre of recreational space by the detention pond on the northern end of the site. And in addition to the civic space, there is a code requirement for amenity space, which is 75 square feet per resident. That's about 19,000 square feet. And we have provided almost 27,000, so it's well over half an acre of community amenity space. Let me, there's a balcony requirement for 50% of the units must have balconies. We are at 100%. And there are required landscape strips and satbacks, the largest of which is along Deerfield Parkway at 20 feet, where there are existing sidewalks and there are mature oaks. And it's our intent to keep and maintain all of those to the degree that we can, barring the decal lines. This is just zeroing in on, this is a typical floor plan of one of the buildings. There's 12 buildings on this site. Happens to be 1,200. It's by the main entry. It's got thoroughfares on all three sides, the top, north and south. And then on the bottom side, it's Deerfield Parkway. There are lots of requirements in the code as to how buildings should be laid out on the site. Not going to get into all of them, but all these buildings are separated basically by the thoroughfares, by the public streets, by parallel parking. And then there's a landscape strip. There's a furniture zone. There's a five-foot sidewalk. And then there's what's called a building setback zone, which must be a minimum of two feet to maximum 15 feet to the back of the sidewalk. And we conform to all of those requirements on each of these buildings. We've added patios to every ground floor unit as livable outdoor space to enhance that experience, to engage the streetscape. We've provided direct access from all of those out to the sidewalks. The main building entries have been dressed up. They're no longer just breezeways, but we've enclosed them at the request of staff through some of our discussions and meetings to make them look and feel very much more part of the building. And we've broken up the building facades, which is another requirement, every 50 feet. If you look at the plan, you'll see that there are joggers in the building. There can't be more than a linear frontage of 50 feet without breaking the plane. So from a rendering perspective, and architecturally, we've gone in a little bit more of an urban direction, which we feel has been very much encouraged by this new form-based code. We've based the design pretty much on commercial buildings and vernacular mills from the early 1900s. They were very much rectangular in form. They're fairly simplistic in their details, both of which lend themselves very well to this new form-based code. There's a limited palette in terms of materials and colors. Again, colors are actually specified in the code, what they can use. And hopefully you can see, it gives a little bit more of a commercial feel, particularly to the ground floor in some of the areas with the storefronts and the canopies. And it also, you'll note, gives the appearance of a flat roof, even though Kathy mentioned it's not actually a flat roof. It's just a very low sloping pitched roof at 412. But from this distance, 60, 80, 90 feet away from the building, when you're walking along the sidewalks, you won't appreciate that pitched roof. It'll actually look like a flat roof. And then just another rendering, this is building 700, which is backed by the pool courtyard. Both of these buildings are around what we call the arrival town square. It's very similar in terms of style. You can see the balconies to all of the units. It's got the retail-looking storefront at the bottom, residential-scale streetlights that start from storefronts. All the buildings have this three-part facade, which is another requirement of the code. We're base in the middle and a top. We have gone to efforts, for example, with the downspouts, to disguise and hide the downspouts at the request of staff. You can see the building entrances, which have become very much now a part of the form and function. The second and third floor ceiling heights are at nine feet, but we bumped the ground floor up to 10 feet. And that allows for the taller storefront-looking windows.
There are 10 minutes remaining.
Plus, it also allows, more importantly, for the conversion of that ground floor space at some point down the road into commercial space. So the highest ceiling at 10 feet makes it easier to do that. So, I mean, that's a dozen, I don't know, maybe two dozen or so, design features of the project. I feel we've worked very hard. It's been a good partnership with the city and the staff, and I hope it can find a way to continue. Thank you so much. Be happy to take questions. And actually, Jay is going to take over.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Preston, if, after Jay speaks and whatever, if there are any questions and they were pertaining to you, I'd be glad to ask you to step back up, which won't count as in your time.
Sure.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I'm Jay Coran from Milton, 535 Owens Farm Road. I'm vice president of multifamily development for Crescent Communities in a different face than you saw last year. Ben Collins was my predecessor here in Atlanta. And now I have the opportunity not only to be a resident of Milton, but also on the Crescent team, and both provide a great source of pride for me, as I think that Crescent has an opportunity to do something great in a great town. I'm proud of Crescent, a company with great capabilities, great institutional capital partners, and great values. And I think that it all fits well within the community here. As Bob reviewed in his presentation of the program, the development has been modified substantially from last year's plan. As you remember, it was a much different look and feel than we're presenting to you this year, but obviously still focused very much on providing a very high-quality product. We've made a lot of modifications, working closely with the staff, trying to adhere to the block-oriented plan, one that presents the opportunity not only to break up the site in the future, should market conditions change and condominium conversion be the desire of the market, through small block settings and independently metered utilities for all of the units. But also, as Bob mentioned, their 10-foot ceilings and a much more of a retail-looking field at the base of the building, should the opportunity be there for demand for commercial components in this area. But what we presented to you is 256 residential units, because the residential component is still the limited agreement, limited ingredient in the city's regional activity center. It'll put a fraction of the stress on the area of roads that the buy-right office or retail development would, and as shown in the staff report, would pay for itself even without the ancillary benefits that are critical to Milton. And ancillary benefits that we talked about last year and that you all recognize are the need to provide housing options for young professionals and executives relocating to Milton who are looking for quality-for-rent product. The limited availability of quality options for young professionals is a material factor in Milton's inability to compete for commercial office leasing and development. And our town primarily provides housing for upper-income executives on a single-family basis. And the multifamily community will attract not only young professionals, but also empty nesters, who also provide high-disposable income, disposable income, that the area needs to support the retail and commercial that does exist. This site, as you know, is the last multifamily development site in Milton, with the only other zoned property for multifamily sitting in a 100-year flood zone. The land next door is bordered to the west by Fry's Electronics, which is surrounded by additional retail on Highway 9. To the north, it's bordered by this office park that we're currently standing in. And to the east, it's across the street from Verizon Office Complex. To the south, there's hospitality office and retail corridor. So you, as you can see, the missing ingredient in this regional activity center is a residential component. And as staff just outlined, there are three components that define that regional activity center: high density, a mix of uses, and walkability or bikeability, were the three components that were outlined. The high density, we are achieving because we are putting the maximum permissible density on this property. It's 12 units per acre and 256 units is what we've proposed to develop. The mix of uses is within the regional activity center. And as the study that was just adopted last year states, that the activity center should offer a mix of uses and connect adjacent residential, particularly new residential development, to commercial areas where appropriate. So the study recognizes the need for a mix of uses within the center. And that's exactly what we're trying to provide, that there's only one residential component to the regional activity center right now. And this would be the second and the only other that would ever exist.
Five minutes remaining.
So I believe, again, that we are providing the one missing piece in this area that actually does achieve the principles of the regional activity center. It's the only opportunity to make a truly walkable and bikeable area within this area. So obviously, the key component, we think, is, as a significant investor in Deerfield and in Milton, and one of the largest landowners in Milton, is providing this component to help stimulate additional development in the area. And with that, I want to introduce John Bell. And John runs our commercial development area here and acquired substantial land nearly 15 years ago for commercial development. And without this stimulus and without this kind of housing, we will continue to own undeveloped land in Milton, which doesn't benefit either the city or Crescent. So with that, I'd like to introduce John.
John Bell, 1366 Ragley Hall, Atlanta, Georgia 30319. As Jay mentioned, I'm the regional senior vice president with Crescent. Basically, I run our commercial division for Atlanta as well as Nashville. I'm going to keep this short and sweet. All of you guys are probably tired of hearing from me already. I think the last time we were here pursuing a rezoning, the message I took from that was, you guys are really anxious and would like to have more commercial office in the city of Milton. One of the things I would like to mention, and Jay already has, we're vested in the city of Milton. We have over 40 acres in the city of Milton. We've built two office buildings. I didn't buy the land here in Deerfield. I wish I could take credit for it, but I came on board with Crescent in '04, and I did lease both those office buildings in Deerfield. We like Deerfield a lot, but I can tell you that employees like to live near where they work, and employees want to locate near where their employees live. Proof to that, in, just completed a development in Buckhead called Phipps Tower. And we saw all the tenants that left the North Fulton Marketplace and come back to Buckhead. And the main reasons those tenants did, and we've heard it from those tenants, was that they wanted to be near their young professional employee base. Likewise, in Nashville, we've got a development called Corporate Center. It's a development very similar to Deerfield. It's a master-planned business park development. We built 10 office buildings, 1.2 million square feet in those office buildings. And we're hearing the same demand for housing in the Cool Springs-Franklin City, Tennessee submarket. We took a non-contiguous property, but walkable, to those office buildings and created 355 units, which helped us to attract a regional headquarter deal in Jackson National Life. And 25% of their employees live in that.
Two minutes remaining.
Live in that apartment housing. Lastly, I applaud you for adopting the form-based code and trying to make way for apartments in this submarket. But unfortunately, the form-based code doesn't work. It's economically non-feasible, based on the way it's drafted, related to the 50% use of commercial or all the ground force space being retail-commercial. It's just prohibited for a multifamily development. If you want continued office, commercial office, which the price point this office land demands, something's got to give. Either the form-based code, that's all I've got. I'd like to introduce John Hagee, formidable competitor. He's a senior development director for Heinz. And Heinz was the original developer for Deerfield. And that's who we bought our commercial land from.
Thank you. Again, I'll be very brief. I think these fellows have really nailed it in terms of their presentation this evening.
Sir, can you please state your address into the record?
My name is John Hagee. I reside at 3920 Lower Rose Road in Marietta. My business is located in Atlanta. Going back, I think the Crescent professionals have really nailed it this evening in terms of what their message is. It's interesting. I heard the word from the architect, connectivity. That's truly the key to successful development these days. We're going to have a gathering tomorrow, as a matter of fact, among our professional community to talk about the office market. And it's very clear, we've seen it happening now, that markets that can provide that kind of connectivity, and it's not just connectivity to roads and other services, but rather connectivity to retail services and residential, that's the difference. That's the key for success for our commercial industry.
30 seconds.
I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment in support of this application?
That's all in support, sir.
Okay. We'll, I'll open up the floor to those in opposition to application, if there are any.
Our first comment comes from Mr. Russ Munisteri. And for the record, he is speaking on behalf of Lake Deerfield HOA. And he has completed an affidavit to represent this HOA.
Good evening, gentlemen. Russ Munisteri, 12803 Doe Drive, directly across the street in the Lake Deerfield subdivision. I am the HOA president, and I am speaking on the behalf of the residents there. The presentation that has, that was given to us tonight seems great on paper. But as homeowners, we have concerns. First, our first concern are our property values. Since there are many apartment complexes that do surround us, another apartment complex, we feel that is going to harm outward values. Over the past couple of years, our property values have been increasing. But again, with the addition of the 256-unit complex, we feel those properties will get harmed. We have concerns in regards to traffic and public safety on the Deerfield Parkway. Over the past couple of years, traffic has increased dramatically. And with the addition of the apartment complex, traffic is going to be even more intense. And my question is, how is that traffic going to be handled? We are concerned about possible increase in crime and drug use. We also, many residents spoke, they have concerns in regards to how the school's going to be affected. I know that Kathy had mentioned that the increase in the population won't affect the schools. But as an elementary school teacher, I've seen it firsthand, that when new developments do go up, class sizes do increase, therefore, education is, can be affected. We also don't want to be known as the apartment capital of Milton. Many of the residents have spoken that they like the Milton Way, and they want to keep the Milton Way, and they want to keep it safe, clean. And with the addition of so many apartment complexes that are in the surrounding area, we're just afraid that, you know, all the things I had mentioned are going to increase: traffic, crime, I mean, that drug use. So that is all I have to say on the behalf of the residents of Lake Deerfield. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, Sudi, if you call in, I think we need to make sure our clock, oh, we got the, I'm sorry.
There are 17 minutes, 31 seconds remaining. And this, our next speaker is Lisa Bills.
Hi, good evening. I'm Lisa Bills. I live at 13279 Marywood Drive. The community I live in is called the Regency at Winward. And I am asking you to deny this request tonight by the applicant. Our community has seen an onslaught of rentals instead of the actual homeowners living in their houses. We are suffering the burden of that. And to add in another 250-plus apartment units would impact the area, not in a positive way. One of the things that comes to mind is the crime that's happened in apartment complexes. I've moved out of Sandy Springs due to the crime in apartment complexes. And the homeowners, I think on this side of town, of Milton, would like to be treated in the same way that the homeowners on the other side of Milton are treated also, with the appreciation of the quality of life. We expect the same thing here, too, even though we do live close to commercial and retail properties. retail properties. And I think it would be a negative impact. It's been stated that it would be a negative impact on the school system as well. And so I'm asking you to vote no to this applicant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker would like to just be read into the record. That's Mr. Ron White at 12870 Deer Park Lane, Milton, Georgia 3004. Quote, "Over 1,200 apartments in the area already don't need to become the apartment capital of the North Georgia," unquote. And that is all we have in opposition, sir.
Okay. We'll close the hearing.
Can I use about 25 seconds?
Sure. You're right, you have an opportunity to do it.
16 seconds.
I stand to be corrected, but I don't believe there's been a multifamily development approved since cityhood in Johns Creek. And I think that you all here in Milton have got the opportunity to be able to step forward and deliver a mix of uses that'll be engaged and set the record that you do, in fact, are open to quality multifamily development. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing portion, and at this point, I'll open back up to our counsel to ask questions of both our staff or any of the applicant's representatives. At this point, is there any questions or comments from counsel?
Yeah, I've got some questions for Kathleen.
Yes, sir.
So the applicants mentioned that, you know, even though we changed up how we were managing the space, in other words, going from just straight zoning to the mechanism that we're using today, that the commercial on the first floor just isn't, doesn't work the way it's called out. Do you have any clue what they mean by that? Do we have any idea what would make our insistence that the first floor be commercial or a substantial portion of that be commercial? What would make it work?
Well, first of all, they have designed the first floor so it can be transferred to office or commercial. And I guess the issue is, is the market here at this point for that to happen? And I guess their position, as if I might speak for them, is that the market is not here yet, but could be in the future. And if so, they may be willing to look at a change of use on that first floor from apartments to something else. I think we, as the planners, have looked at this proposal and felt that, two things, that number one, we just really rezoned with the new Form-Based Code in the last six months, and that the vision of the master plan was for mixed use, and that we really thought the mixed use is more of a vertical mixed use. We look around the region, and we look really down the street at Avalon, which is about to, well, it is coming out of the ground now. And that is a complete vertical mixed-use type development. You look at Peachtree Corners, there's one over there proposed. So these types of developments are coming out, and they reflect more of the vision of our master plan and implemented through the T6 zone of the Form-Based Code, which says not only what the form should look like, which they've responded to, I must admit, the form that is articulated in the Form-Based Code is certainly responded to by this proposal. What is not is the requirement on the first floor for either non-residential uses on the first floor or 50% mix of mixed uses. And that's really where the diversion happens.
Is it the kind of thing we think where it's just a, and maybe we should be asking the applicants the question, but do we need to have more residents to support the commercial? I mean, I'm guessing that it's not a commercial use isn't appropriate. I'm guessing it's the amount that's in question here.
Right. I mean, our requirement is 50% mixed use, that you can only have 50% of apartments, that it cannot be 100% an apartment use. And of course, again, I'm speaking for them, so maybe they should come up, is that, you know, they're saying that the market is not there for that requirement, for the mix of uses, and that really the market is only there for the apartments. Now, obviously, we disagree, we, the planner staff, in that we feel that there is a market there. We even discussed with them, to some extent, the idea of maybe having a performance standard that within two years, so much of that first floor can be converted to a mixed use, and then two years after, or whatever the amount is. So there's a performance standard. But to have 100% of the apartment usage in the development really does not speak to the newly enacted zoning code.
Right.
And that's the gist right there.
Karen?
Kathy. You don't get to sit back down yet. The applicant may note of the fact that there's a real need for multifamily up in this area. I know under our plan, we want to have this area be a true mixed-use area. What are the number of multifamily units that we have in this area?
I'm going to turn to Robin, who's...
I would have to go back and look at the old file. I mean, I can't remember off the top of my head. We researched it for the last case back last year, but I can run and get it for you.
I mean, to me, it seems like if we had no multifamily here, then I would say we'll probably need the multifamily in order to get the balance of the multifamily commercial. But if we already have the multifamily, a significant amount of it, we don't need more multifamily, or it just makes the balance even worse than it already is. And so that's what I was wondering, is what, you know, if we had any idea how many units we already have, and if we have a significant number of units, then we want to make sure any new development doesn't tilt that balance.
Yeah. Well, I think if...
Well, the applicant's saying 2,200, but do you want me to check my records from last, you know, it's going to be the same number.
Okay. Well, then, that's still a significant number of multifamily units in the area. It's not like there is a huge need for multifamily that we're not able to meet if we have 2,200 units.
Right. And what we're looking for, again, which goes back to the intent for the Regional Activity Center, is that vibe, if you will, with a mix of uses that creates excitement and walkability and connectivity, that having a single-use type development doesn't really reflect. And so I think it's that vision of what we're looking for. And, you know, you heard the presentation from Marty last week about Winward will be the end of the line, and that you really want the area around it developed in a way that can utilize that Marty stop so that, again, you've got the transportation access, you've got the development here, the walkability, the density, the vibe, as you will, for this whole area. So that's what we're trying to create.
Firstly, I don't like the idea of approving a plan and then going against what was just approved less than a year later. To me, you know, if you've done your homework and approved the right plan, you ought to be able to live with it at least a few years before it has to be changed.
Bell?
Kathy, you mentioned imposing performance standards and converting the first floor level to commercial over some given time period. What kind of legal imposition could we put on that? And if they were not to meet that over a stated course of time, what would be the consequences as far as the city's concerned?
Yeah. Again, we sort of discussed it conceptually, but we didn't get into detail. So clearly, I think Ken would have to weigh in on whether or not that could work legally.
I've seen some jurisdictions do that with conditions. And what I have seen done traditionally is to perhaps trigger a certain amount of residential build-out based upon meeting certain performance standards on commercial. So if you are able to fill up this amount of commercial, then you can then have this amount of residential. It isn't supposed to be, it works as an incentive to try and incentivize the developer to try and build out their commercial. Have I seen it work? I typically seen it be brought back in for a zoning condition amendment, is what I typically see occur, if you want to know the truth. But that's the concept.
And I guess this is kind of the opposite, because they would, the way I'm reading it, would want to build out the residential and then, as you understand, convert back to a commercial if the market were there. That would be kind of a tough...
It's the opposite.
And I guess, you know, question I have, obviously, if the applicant had come back with 50% non-residential, besides any other variances, it wouldn't be here before us tonight, correct? So obviously, that's a big...
Well, I take that back. Because it's apartment, it is a use permit.
But it's a much bigger difference. And whether it's 50%, you know, non-residential and 50% residential per our code, we're a long way off. And I'll just say this, you know, this is a really tough decision. I certainly understand the economics and the viability of the property right now. I also understand the concerns of the citizens. And, you know, Milton's a little bit different. We, you know, we like to think that, or we do, we've got a lot of residential, a lot of open space, we have a very little bit of commercial. And, you know, so that kind of puts us at a different issue than most cities. It's easier for most cities to go from commercial back to, say, residential, because they have plenty of commercial, but we don't have plenty, you know, much less than 15% of our land. So, you know, pretty soon, if we slowly rezone everything back to residential, just while the residential market is hot right now, you know, we may be in a trouble. So I understand everybody's issue here. I guess I would have a question for the applicant. I don't know, Pete, if you'd want to, you know, like I just asked Kathy, you know, we're a big difference from 100% residential from 50% residential. I know, you know, you mentioned, and I think Mr. President mentioned, you know, having the first floors designed or built so they could be converted later, but how, you know, at this point, it's 100, it's, you know, we're all the way to two different extremes. Is there, you know, anything else you guys could have come back to us on that, you know, even met somewhere in the middle or whatever? I don't know if you could just comment on that.
Yeah, I think the volume of commercial that's required per the code is not, I mean, the difference in examples that continue to be given of successful multifamily, or successful mixed-use developments are places where there is demand for each of the different product types. So if there is a substantial amount of demand in the area for additional retail along Deerfield Parkway, then there might be an additional opportunity to get that kind of deal financed. What happens often with mixed-use deals in a multifamily environment is a small amount of mixed use is put into the deal where the strength of the multifamily market can carry that small amount of burden. And there is no, you know, we've got a site here with substantial TOBO issues in a suburban area where we think that bringing the multifamily component will help stimulate the commercial demand. So if we are to try to further burden that, particularly with a substantial amount of commercial component, then it'll be very difficult to even execute on the multifamily component. But there isn't an incremental driver for additional commercial component here, and there isn't retail or office. And so to say they're all the ground floor component, or even a substantial amount of that ground floor component needs to be an economic burden on the project, just doesn't allow us to do something that's financeable and that can, we think it would be done at a very high-quality level. And then additionally, you know, it's often done in situations like this where you're in a high-rise environment. So you may be going up 25 floors, and you have to have a whole ground floor level be commercial. Well, that's an attractive component where it's a relatively small portion of your overall development component. But here, on a two- or three-story, in this case, a three-story community, you'd be talking about a large portion of that being driven by commercial.
Joe?
Yeah, so the follow-up to that, I mean, you guys must run some models or something that would have said, here's what we could support from a commercial space point of view, or if we had this much residential, we could support the commercial that's required. What did you guys find out?
A very small component of it. I mean, and it's interesting, too, because we're talking a lot about the demand for mixed use and the desire for mixed use, and the importance of that to this Regional Activity Center. But the only mixed-use requirement on this is if you're building apartments, then there has to be a mixed-use component. If we are here tonight asking just to build office, there's no requirement for apartments. So the mixed-use component that keeps being required here is actually an inconsistency in the code. So there's very little demand for the commercial and the office components, and there's a strong demand, there's 97% occupancy in this submarket, and we're talking about 2,200 apartments in a city of 35,000 people. So, you know, let's put it in perspective of the overall market.
Right. But we're talking about 10% of what's available today is being offered in this development. I mean, should it be, you know, 50%? Should it be 25%? If you had the flexibility to have more units, does the success of the commercial piece of this become easier to understand or easier to plan?
Potentially. I mean, particularly if we were to be able to separate those components out and allocate the 256 units to a greater portion of the property and have additional density granted on the property that in the future could be built when there is demand for new office and retail. But the way that this is being required is, A, it's a cumulative 256 units across the entire property, whether it is a unit of residential or a unit of commercial. And secondly, it's being required to be vertically integrated, which means it's got to be done at the same time, which makes it unfinanceable in this market, because there's just not enough economic demand for the retail or the commercial to justify the investment in new development.
Yeah, I just, I mean, there's a focus on the commercial aspect of this, which is why the residential's the only part that requires, you know, mixed use. Okay? So if it was all just going to be developed as commercial, we wouldn't have an issue with that. The commercial space is what we believe is the value in this particular area. And, you know, this is your second time to come back here, and, you know, I'm trying to think through, how do we work with you guys? Because I don't want you to leave, if we deny this, thinking that we just don't like it. That's not it at all. We're trying to figure out how to work with you guys. And so I'm really interested, if we've missed the mark with the Form-Based Code, how far off are we? To get back to Joe's question, you know, if there was some way for us to understand what we could do to help out, it would be important to us to understand.
Yeah, I mean, if there's...
One of the things I've seen, vertically mixed use is very difficult. It's difficult to get financed. It's difficult to get all product types working on the same demand at one time. So they're difficult to pull off. What I've seen be very successful, and I'm going to speak specifically to the national market, is separate but mixed-used developments. Separate but mixed use. So when the office demand's there, you develop the office. When the retail demand's there, you develop the retail. When the multifamily demand's there, you develop the multifamily. And then at the end of the day, after it's all developed out, you get separate but mixed-use development, which are very successful, very easy to finance. And at the end of the day, in my opinion, we did a vertically mixed-use development in Charlotte, Piedmont Town Center. And the retail piece was very difficult, and the requirement that we put on ourselves was much smaller than the Form-Based Code that you guys have required. And we still had to subsidize that retail component. My answer to your question is, we've only got 21 acres. To do separate mixed use or vertical mixed use is very, very difficult on 21 acres. What I would tell you is that we've got another 20 acres in Milton, in the Deerfield Business Park, that if we have this type of product that's walkable, that it's going to help us develop those office buildings. And you're still mixed use, they'll walk to the retail. I wish the product, I wish it was, I wish it was larger. We have 30 acres, half of which is in Milton, half of which is in Alpharetta, that we're dearly holding on to. It's a core asset for us. And I would like to see there separate but mixed use, not vertical mixed use, because I think that's what makes sense on that 30 acres. I've got a little more acreage to work with. I've got a little more acreage to work with to make that, that kind of opportunity happen. But with your form-based code, it's going to be a real challenge for me on that thirty-acre site when it's time to put that into play. I hope that, I hope that helps you.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, and I have a question for the applicant who can stop me if I'm going out of line legally. To the applicant, whoever, you know, wants to speak once I ask the question. I think you guys understand our concerns. I think you also hear concerns from the community, which I totally understand. Out of some of the comments tonight where, where folks are worried about traffic, density, crime, other things, what makes this project different than a typical apartment complex or multifamily anywhere else in this area or other areas that, that concern people?
If I could just make a quick comment and then let Jay address that comment. One, I think, is that the people that are renting these types of walkable apartment developments, it's a, it's a different, if it's a different renter than what we've seen in the past.
There's truth to the fact that the demographics have changed apartment renting. There are more renters by choice, obviously. We're planning to build a very high-quality product. And by building a high-quality product, we're going to need to demand higher rents. I think there's support in this market for young professionals and for executives who, who need a rental home to, to come into the area, as well as there's a lot of, you're going to be, I think there's going to be a lot of demand for empty nesters. It's becoming more and more popular in communities like this where they're downsizing empty nesters who are looking for an opportunity to live in and around areas like Milton to be closer to their, to their grandchildren. But, you know, the, the interesting thing, there are comments about the, the concern about stress on the schools. So, I would presume that these same people would be against any new residential development in the community because any new residential, in fact, we will have much less of a ratio of, of children who would be attending the schools than a typical single-family development. So, I would anticipate that there, these, these same people would be against a single-family development. And, and I don't think that we're going to be seeking and attempting to retain individuals who are going to be more apt to, to have a criminal background than, than other residential developments. So, you know, it, it's in our best interest to run a very high-quality organization and, and community. And we will obviously run it in the most professional manner we can. And, and obviously, when we have a professional management association, you have better controls over your community than a lot of single-family or, or kind of any development would.
I've got a question. What, what are you looking for as far as rents? What, what is your, your target?
I think our average rent would probably be in the three-hundred, thirteen-hundred to thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-dollar range. I think that there's an opportunity here, being as the, the, the most recent product that's been developed for a multifamily in, in this area is over a decade old. The, the quality of the products has, has changed dramatically. And, and most of what we build in the apartment world is, it used to be considered condo quality and in fact is a higher quality than, than a lot of condominiums that were built even before the last cycle. So, I think that there's an opportunity to, to provide something that really will attract the renters by choice.
Was that, and you may not, we're about, last time Pete could answer this, was the, this came before us before, weren't we talking more like a, about double rent that, more of a twenty-five to three-thousand-dollar a month? A real high-end product, does that ring a bell? Gee, I was, I was thinking that's what you guys had said originally.
Um, I, sorry.
Ask Pete. Okay.
I think there might have been a couple of units that would go after that, but most of the units were more baseline. They, one and two values.
Okay.
That plan, if y'all can remember, had the unusual component of having duplexes in it. And the thought and idea there was that you would get corporations to come in and do long-term leases on those duplexes for the executives that they would have trafficking in and trafficking out of the city of Milton. And that's where you would have the ability to get some juiced-up rentals. But of course, the, the building configuration is what the building configuration is now, being compliant with your, with your form-based code.
What else, Bill?
Yes, this is for the applicant's team. Not sure who wants to address it. But both Mr. Kurian and Mr. Hendricks brought up site development issues. Mr. Hendricks stated there is some cost in the range of, I don't know, two, two-point-six million dollars. And I'm kind of unclear what's, what's driving that. I know the, the issue about the extreme topography out there, but it sounded like there was a hardship involved between building commercial and office and building residential or multifamily. Is there a relationship there or did I miss something?
Bob Vanskin is our civil engineer and is familiar, obviously, with the grading plan and the, and the anticipated volume of retaining walls required to build on the site. But the twenty-one acres has substantial topography and has changes in elevations up to fifty feet. So, the, the development, whether, whether it's the residential development or commercial development, will, will suffer from the challenges on that site. The plan that we had presented previously tried to move with the site more than what we've been kind of directed to, to pursue with the current design. So, the current design is certainly going to be more expensive from a development standpoint than what we presented last year, just because of the linear nature of the, the block-oriented site plan. So, but, but generally speaking, the topography of the site, no matter what we develop on, is going to be very expensive.
Sure. Okay, so that, that site work number wasn't just new, that was just with the site that, no matter what you did, that was.
It's new, it changes from the old type thing that was originally considered to the new one meeting the form-based code.
Okay, that, that's kind of my question, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be far more expensive to design to the new form-based code because of the grid-like nature and the urban nature of the layout that we have to meet. It doesn't give us the flexibility, if you wish, from a grading perspective, to go with the flow of the land. You know, because we have thoroughfare requirements, we have block requirements, we have parallel parking requirements and sidewalks and furniture zones and two to fifteen feet. By the time you plug all that into the formula, it is what it is. And if there's a twenty-foot grade differential on the existing topo, we can't work with that twenty-foot grade differential. We have to basically mass grade and put in a lot more retaining walls. Whereas the old plan a year ago was more organic, if you wish, more informal. And it was laid out more a little bit like an old, you know, garden-style complex where you basically put the buildings, you have, you know, we've got twenty-one acres, so we had enough land to place the buildings where it made most sense and carve them into the topo. That's almost impossible to do now with the new form-based code because of the dimensional criteria that comes with it. You know, that's, I think that's what he's referring to. So, the site development cost is significantly higher.
So, comparatively, would you say the site development cost for this current plan that you have now would be the same as if you were to develop an office and commercial? The current zoning?
Yeah, I believe it, I believe it would be. It's, it's because of the requirements of the form-based code. It's not so much the use, it's the restrictions, the dimensional restrictions and the criteria put on street whips and buildings to streets and the urban grid-like nature that you have to come up with in the site plan. So, I don't think it's, I personally don't think it's much use-related. Whether it's an office use or commercial, retail use or residential use, you still have to meet the confines of the form-based code, which is still going to require mass grading, pretty much. Mass, mass grading, additional site development and retaining walls. I mean, we'll, we'll get into, I fully anticipate there would be a couple of million dollars more on a twenty-one-acre site than what we would normally do.
More than if you were to develop it for commercial and office?
No, I'm not saying more. It's, it's not due to the use so much. It's due to the form-based code, to the criteria and the restrictive nature of the form-based code. I don't have the flexibility to put my buildings where it makes most sense to put them on this twenty-one acres. I mean, it has to be dictated and driven by the requirements of the form-based code. For example, the block structure. It sets up the whole, the whole concept of, of the site. And, and there's certain maximum sizes to the block structure. So, you have to divide the site into, on this twenty-one acres, into seven blocks. That's three acres apiece. And then you have to have thoroughfares pretty much dividing all of those blocks. And then you have to have the buildings so far from the thoroughfare. So, I, I don't really have much a choice in laying out the plan. The plan begins to drive and dictate itself, really, irrespective of the topography, if, if that makes sense. It's just one of the challenges. It's always one of the challenges in the form-based code. I mean, I'm working numerous projects across the country. I, I will, I will tell you, this is a, an extremely restrictive form-based code. It is the most restrictive form-based code that I am working with, and I've been at it almost thirty years. And I'm working seven different jurisdictions at the moment across the country, up and down the East Coast, with similar form-based code. You know, and architectural standards, DRBs and ARBs and historical preservation committees and the like. That commercial requirement is the most restrictive that I have seen.
But I would almost just comment on that. I'm, and this may be going a different discussion than what we're at right now, but that's probably something where, if it made that big a difference, you know, on a project that fit the code, I'm sure the city could work with you with variances or, or look at it to, to, you know, possibly wouldn't have a huge impact. Again, we don't want to, you know, we don't want to impact something. We've got a form-based code for what we believe is to try to make, you know, Milton a great place and do the best we can, but obviously don't want to price somebody out of being able to do anything. So, this is just a general statement, but I would think that the council and the mayor and their staff would be open if there were a project that it was going to cost you, you know, make it to where it wasn't viable, that we could work with you a little bit or take a look at that. So, go ahead, Bill.
I'd like to have either Kathy or Bob respond to that answer.
I'll be all for you too, but I.
I mean, Bob Ussemey.
Yes, but, yes. I don't know if you've all met Bob Ussemey. Yes, the form-based code does require a more specific development pattern than previously utilized under the old zoning. And it does have more constraints to it. And as a result, in terms of where the buildings are placed and the, and the requirements for the sidewalks and the roads and the size of the, so, so there is a certain amount, certainly, of extra expenditure to implement the facets of the form-based code. It is just part of the creation, though, of that grid pattern, which then enhances workability, which is what we're looking for. And so, that is inherent in form-based codes.
Trying to figure out how to craft this. Mr. Preston mentioned it's more, it's not a factor of use. It's more of the, of the form-based code. Would you agree with it?
Yes, because it, we're not looking at what the use is. Again, we're just looking at the box. So, it's how we place the box on the site. The original proposal that came through last year, if you remember, as Mr. Preston says, which was more organic. It reminded you of a college campus. And there were, there was just one road through it that meandered. And, and then they, various setbacks of, of the buildings. This is a much more formalized development pattern that is embedded within this form-based code. And so, but it's, again, it's, it's, it's the box. Whether it's used for apartments or a commercial or office or a mixture, again, it's the box and how that box is located on the site is really what the form-based code is, is dictating.
So, it could do the same development using form-based codes and still be office or commercial?
Correct, correct.
Kathy, are we getting the same kind of argument from other builders that have experienced our form-based code?
Uh, no. Well, you know, most of the development that we've seen so far has been over in Crab Apple, which is a smaller scale. But they have been able to work through the form-based code, I think, very creatively. And certainly have come up with something that they've thanked us in terms of what it has looked at and how, how the site, sighting has happened on, on the parcel of land. We, this is essentially in the Deerfield area in terms of the scale of the project, this is the largest-scale project that we've seen using the, the Deerfield form-based code. But don't forget, it is Deerfield area, especially T-six, has been, has been created to be a very dense type of development. Now, also, you know, this site, if one used TDRs, one could, could utilize thirty-six units per acre. So, there's a tremendous amount of density that's available on the site. But of course, after, you can only, by right, go up to twelve units. And then subsequent to that, you could go up to thirty-six, but you would have to buy the TDRs. But there is a lot of density built in on the site to be utilized if one wanted to, obviously.
Is the topography on this land really that much different from what other developers have experienced in Crab Apple? I mean, is it really that much?
Yeah, there, there, yes, yes. The, the topo, because you're dealing with twenty acres. In Crab Apple, you're, well, you know, you, we've got some large development sites that are going, being developed as residential. But the topo is, is not as great as, as it is here, clearly. But, but again, it's, it's the nature of the beast in, in Georgia. I mean, you know, you do have these topo changes. And so, it has to be built into the development costs, clearly.
And I think we're, we're getting off on another subject. And obviously, if we start to see where the form-based code part is really a hurdle, you know, we can have a work session and talk about it. You know, at this point, not really, I'm hearing the applicant say that the form-based code did put a, a larger financial burden on them. But the reality is, we're still looking at a use issue, you know, and, and, you know, that's the, the hurdle on this project from both sides is it's a use issue, correct?
Yes, it's, it's a use and a variance issue.
Yeah.
And since, and since, could Bill O'Connor come up? I just have a question for him. Bill? Bill, we're hearing a lot that there's no demand for commercial in this area. And being our economic development coordinator, I just want to know your opinion on that statement?
With a few, with a few developers and brokers I've dealt with along the way, they have indicated the demand really isn't there yet and that they've got some spaces that they're having trouble filling. I think the Kohl's Target Plaza is one example where they've got some local space, too much local space to be able to get filled up. Many of the out parcels, they're having trouble moving those at this point in time. Eventually, we expect the economy will come back and the pressure, development pressure will be here for commercial. But they indicate to me, that's a very small sample, they do indicate that there's not a high demand for retail space.
What about office? Because they could do this as office, it wouldn't have to be retail, correct?
Yeah, the same is true for office space. It's been described to me that during the boom years, so much commercial office space was built up in this region that now that the economy's coming back, it's taking time to get that filled back up again. And there isn't the demand yet for new, any significant new commercial office space either. The demand is coming back for residential, but not for commercial office space or retail. To the extent, you know, any significant extent, it's, it's showing signs of improvement. But we're trying to fill up what we have now.
But do they, for the most part, feel like eventually it will be, what we have now be filled and there will be a demand for?
We certainly hope, certainly hope so, but it's really hard to predict. They tell me it's really hard to predict when that would be. Could be eighteen months, two years, five years. It's hard to tell.
Yeah, and again, that's a tough call from our side, too. I mean, we don't have a crystal ball. You guys don't, you know, have a crystal ball. Your crystal ball might be a little bit sharper than ours. But, you know, again, if we start trying to predict with other people's land and money, that's a, you know, we can't do that either. So, yeah, this is a tough, tough one because, you know, we're looking at a multifamily development that doesn't fit our code right now. And there are concerns with that. But on the flip side, I see the, you know, the property owner developers' perspective, too. They, they don't think there's a market there. So, um, again, that's why I was asking earlier if there was a quasi-mix, even if it wasn't a 50-50. But it doesn't sound like that really makes sense for what you guys are trying to do.
Along those lines, I mean, I guess it's got a statement, not a question, but not. An applicant came through the first go-around. I supported it, um, however, the majority didn't. And, um, I was really hoping that y'all could give, give me a little bit of something mixed to grab a hold of and, and help push it through this time. I was kind of disappointed in that. I mean, I understand where you're coming from, um, but I sure would have liked to have seen something, to be vertically integrated with this as you're building the, the mixed use.
Anybody else? Anything, Bill? Uh, just a quick statement. The next item on our agenda has to do with the opportunity zone in the Deerfield corridor. And I think it's, we pursue that or are pursuing that in the vein of helping to, to bring in more development, commercial development. And, uh, wish only it had been in place here a couple of years ago, so we all could have taken advantage of that. But, uh, hopefully in the not-too-distant future, we will have another tool in our development toolbox that, uh, we can work with, not only in this, this type of development and other properties in, in the city. Anybody else? Matt?
And I, yeah, I, I just, um, wish we could have seen some aspect of a commercial component in that. I mean, it's, um, you know, you go over by the LA Fitness in Alpharetta, and I see that everybody being busy, busy all the time. And, um, and I know where we are on this. It's just, um, you know, initially it was zoned entirely commercially. You guys tried two different projects, 100% commercial, the downturn of the economy, um, at that time. For whatever reason, the numbers worked then. Why they're not working now, I'm still trying to understand that. I'm just not clarifying as far as why you think there is no demand. Um, I know that there are challenging demands. We're trying to improve that, but that doesn't mean it won't come. So from where I am, I think I have to hold true to the vote that I did last time.
Anybody else?
Ken, I got a question, just legally. Can you recap where we are? Uh, you know, obviously, we heard this, there's a different application. And, um, legally, where were we at? And then this is, this was submitted as a totally new application. Is that correct, just based on a new code?
Mr. Mayor, I believe where we are is the, this was at request, came back down from the court to have it considered pursuant to our form-based, base code. So the city of Milton is doing everything correctly. We're in the process. You need to take action based upon your own, you know, public policy objectives and of course, the code as set forth. Uh, and then, of course, the applicant will do whatever they need to do based upon the decision you make this evening. So there's, there's nothing more to it.
Like, can you explain, too, how basically it, uh, went to the court? And so is the court just saying, relook at it, give it another shot at this? Or what's your opinion?
It wasn't like a traditional remand upon a zoning loss. It wasn't that. It was, we have instituted this new code. And I believe the applicant said, well, I would prefer to be looked at under this new code and therefore, for purposes of efficiency, et cetera, asked that it be remanded, without a finding on the original action, back to the city council for review under this new code. That's it. So it is different.
But what I'm asking, if, does applicant have the ability to go back to the original application and go through the process and continue? Or is this a step in?
Mr. Mayor, I, I think I'm not really going to be able to speak to, to what the applicant may do as far as a, a, some sort of future action. Uh, my sense would be that, that given that there's been a remand that asks that you look at it under this code, that to the extent there is further legal action on this, it will probably be based upon this code and this decision this evening, and we would not revert back to the old one. But that's, that's my opinion. And of course, the applicant may have something else in mind. That would be what we're arguing.
Okay, you're saying the old, it would not be based on the old application, but this application?
That's, that's my belief.
All right. That's all I've got. Anybody? Comment, motion, question?
I'll move to deny U 13-02, V C 13-03, Deerfield Parkway, West Side Crescent Communities LLC, for a use permit to allow the construction of 256 multifamily residential units and related accessory uses, Section 64-1839, and a two-part concurrent variance, too. Number one, provide 100% of the site for apartments. It's Chapter 64, Division 5.8, 4.6.6.8.2. And number two, to delete the requirement, provide a minimum of 300 cubic feet of separate contiguous storage space shall be provided to each dwelling unit. It's Agenda Item Number 13-231.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion, Councilmember Losz, to add it to the record, and a second by Councilman Thurman. Is there any discussion? Okay, and again, I'd like to say I totally, you know, this is a really tough one, so, but, see both sides, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Uh, we could move on to our unfinished business. City?
Consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 6, Administration, Financial Management Program, Section 2, 626A2, to provide for piggybacking from contracts of other public entities. This is Agenda Item Number 13-232. It was heard at the October 7th regular council meeting under first presentation. Ms. Stacy English.
They just didn't want to hear me talk.
Something I said?
I guess so. What you have before you tonight is, um, the current policy. We're trying to change some of the language in it. Currently, it provides for piggybacking off of the municipality contracts, which means other cities. It doesn't allow for us to contract on other counties, um, authorities or school boards. And so we were just asking to change the language to allow for piggybacking on those other entities. This is, this is in line with other jurisdictions around us that also allow for piggybacking. We're also clearing up some of the language in there that discusses the length of term in which we can allow for the piggybacking to occur, which is within 12 months after the bidding. Just clearing up some language. Can we cross, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, I have one. Can I, Bill? I have a concern and, uh, this question. If we were to piggyback on every other municipality, county, uh, school board, authority in the state, I think it tells me there's a restriction on competition out there. It, it kind of implies that each and every municipality, county, school board in the state has the same list of vendors. Now, we're going to piggyback on a, a contract with McIntosh County, for example. And, uh, who's this? And our vendors are approved vendors up here. They're not on McIntosh County's list. And we could have possibly greater competition if we had our vendor list included in that. What's to say that, uh, we're going to get the best deal on any type of purchase order?
It's a good question. And I think that, you know, the department has themselves understand what the market looks like. And I think if they feel that they can get a better deal within our market with the vendors that we currently use, then we would certainly go after that. If it's, if allowing us to piggyback from the other public entities allows for a greater efficiency of time, and if we, if we pretty much agree with the, the vendor list that they have, then I think that this, this just allows for greater efficiency within the city government. This is just expanding, we're already doing this anyway. It just expands it to other public entities and allows for better use of our resources.
Karen?
So what it does is it says that instead of having to go to bid, if there's a time constraint or if you feel like somebody's already gotten the best price, you can just go to that. Otherwise, we would always go to a, a public bid-type process to make sure we are getting the best price.
Exactly.
It's highlighted itself in the fact that we think we found a better deal with a county contract than we found with a municipality contract. So this was all in the pers, the, the reason we even found this was in the pursuit of a better deal. So, um, you know, we're going to look for things that make sense. And this is just, it gives us an option, but it doesn't say we have to use it. But when we saw we wanted to use it and realized we couldn't, um, this just brings us probably, it's, it's, I think it's probably safe to say, this brings us more in conformance of what's normal as opposed to being something extraordinary.
And I'm assuming that most people were bidding something they would know what is kind of already out there and already approved. So if you weren't getting something, then it would be, they're not going to go well above that or else you could just go to what's already out there.
Competition breeds success, as far as we're concerned. So, yeah, we, we seek competition and we seek that better price, whether that's one that was competitively bid by some, in somebody else's process or one that's done our, by us.
How, how are we aware of all of these other contracts out there?
Gosh, you know, there's contracts that float around for all sorts of different stuff. And I guess that's just part of being in the industry, being in the business, that if we know we're looking for fire uniforms, we kind of know, you know, who around us uses who and when the competitive bids have taken place and who's satisfied with the wearability of the particular uniform. You know, it's just part of being in the business and doing it.
Google.
Exactly.
Absolutely. You know, the internet's a good thing and it allows us to be exposed to a lot of different things that we otherwise wouldn't be able to find.
And we use this before in other things. I mean, having some of our public works stuff, we've piggybacked on our automobile purchases and stuff like that.
Ken and I all of a sudden both raised our hand at the exact same time when you uttered the word public works. There's, the state law is pretty specific with respect to public works, construction-type projects.
Oh, yeah.
And those have to go through, um, a competitive bid process. So we wouldn't use these for, for that, but merchandise.
Services, though.
Services. Yeah, this piggybacking is only for those which we control almost exclusively at the city of Milton level. Once it gets into the state statutory level, none of our rules are going to come into play. It's going to be based on what the state law amending.
So we're talking more of, uh, products rather than services?
Talking uniforms and, uh, vehicles that might fall or might not fall in the state contract. We would be talking potentially, um, you know, shotgun mags for police cars, you know, that, that kind of stuff.
But bottom line, this is something, just, it gives you another, you, you, you don't have to use it. You can use it if it, if it's beneficial to the city. You can, you can use both, you know, fit it out here and look and see what else is better out there.
We, we lean towards competition before we lean towards piggybacking. But it is nice when you find a good one out there, particularly one that's good and very current, you know? Because this expires, too. You, you know, we're not going to go piggyback on a contract that's seven years old. You know, we have this real discreet window to even use this. And one more thing to point out is the contract upon which we can piggyback had to be competitively bid in its own right. So it had to be competitively bid and we can use it for, it's good for basically 12 months. And then it's, we can't piggyback after that. It's done.
Okay. Any questions on that, though? Thank you, Stacy. Do I have a motion? Do I want to make a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion, uh, that we approve the consideration of ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 6, Administration, Financial Management Program, Section 2-626A2, to provide for piggybacking from contracts of other public entities. Agenda Item Number 13-232.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Thurman, second by, uh, Councilmember Coats. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Um, city, if you'll approve the new business, aye.
Next item is consideration of a resolution of the City Council of Milton, Georgia, to adopt an urban redevelopment plan for areas within Milton, Georgia, pursuant to the provisions of the Urban Development Law, OCGA Section 3661, 1 and SEC, to approve an application for an opportunity zone for all or part of the area encompassed by such redevelopment plan pursuant to OCGA Section 48, 7, 40.1, to promote the public health, safety and welfare and for other purposes. This is Agenda Item Number 13-246. This was discussed at the October 14th work session. Mr. Bill O'Connor.
Good evening, once again. As we discussed at last week's work session, uh, we are recommending that we attempt to get another tool in stoolbox, if you will, in economic development. The Urban Development Law provides for opportunity zones, uh, in certain areas. And it includes a, uh, it would provide a $3,500 tax credit per job created, new Georgia job created, for a period of five years. And there can be as few as two jobs, two new jobs created. Our neighbors in Roswell and Alpharetta and other places have some opportunity zones identified. And we think that if we can get, uh, some area designated an opportunity zone, that we'd be beneficial in, uh, helping us compete for new businesses that would come into the city of Milton. So we, uh, we highly recommend it and ask for your authorization to apply.
Okay, and there are any questions for Bill on that?
Any questions for me or our consultant Joe Young is here as well, if you have any technical questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Open it up for?
Let me, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 13-246.
Second.
Okay, I've got a, uh, motion from Councilmember Coats, second by, in front of, I believe, Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Uh, city clerk will please sound the next item on our business, new business.
Next item is consideration of a resolution adopting the master plan for Bell Memorial Park. This is Agenda Item Number 13-247. This was discussed at the October 14th work session. Mr. Jim Craig.
David, I'm going to ask if you can, uh, bring up the drawing I put on the desktop there for you. Very good, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, what you should have in front of you, the newest drawings. Uh, I printed out individual ones, plus we were able to get them onto the system as well. What we have here is the results of seven months of work and research and public input in trying to see what is the best use we can come up with for the land that exists and the newly acquired land at Bell Memorial Park. We did review this last week at the work, workshop. We essentially have created an opportunity to have seven fields laid out over the course of six, one being a dual-utilized multipurpose field for rectangular sports as well as diamond-shaped sports, and balances the need of additional facilities, parking and green space. At this point, I'd like to ask you, and if you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Jones? Bill?
Yeah, and it's not with a plan that, I think it's a good plan. But, uh, it's in the, uh, in the contract. And the contract amount, uh, maybe it's something we need to address in purchasing. But, uh, this apparently is change order number two. What I'd really like to see whenever we get these in front of us is, uh, a trail of base contract and change orders to those contracts and a description of each of the change orders that, uh, transpired during the course of the, uh, contract terms.
I understand, sir. I can certainly address that for you when we get to that.
Is that on the next item, actually, I believe, isn't it?
Right, that's the next.
Did I sound like?
We can, we can either talk.
I can talk about it now if you'd like.
Why don't we just, yeah, let's talk about, I mean, you're welcome to, if you want to talk about it on the next item.
You, you brought it up, if you want to talk about it now.
I'm more interested in how you're going to, you know, intertwine diamond sports, shaped sports in this.
Good question. What we're looking at is the usage of the fields based upon the season of the sport. In the springtime, baseball has its biggest utilization. At four fields that we have at Bell Memorial Park right now, we're overcrowded. Uh, every single study, NRPA, local GRPA, uh, every consultant who's been, uh, through the city since 2009 has indicated the four fields is not sufficient for the population we're tempted to serve. Adding an additional field, using the space on a multipurpose field, will allow us to serve the larger sport in spring, which is baseball, and still gives us a multipurpose field for, uh, supporting lacrosse, which is a growing sport here in the city. In the fall, there tends to be less people playing baseball, and that's because a lot of them are playing football. And so by now switching over to just four diamond-shaped fields and making available the two multipurpose fields, we can effectively run a football program here in support with the football program being run with the city of Alpharetta. So this plan dovetails indirectly with the city of Alpharetta and city of Milton park sharing agreement.
Okay, makes sense, thanks. Um, any other questions on this item, or this plan? Uh, you know, Carmen, I, I think, uh, you guys did a great job with, you know, using what, what we had and the constraints. And like I said before, sometimes unfortunately, you know, when we're trying to plan something and do something really nice for the city, we get, we get kind of stopped by those, some of those silly little rules that we come up with ourselves and make everybody else follow up for parking and access and this and that. So you, uh, I think you guys did a good job with working everything in to meet all the requirements, but get as much possible use out of it, so.
Thank you.
Um, ma'am?
How long would the build-out be again? I just remember, you said last time, I just remember.
Our consultant, who by the way, uh, Foresight Group Eric and Mattson is here to support us as well. Uh, we're projecting a 12-month build-out.
And for the baseball programs, would they just take a hiatus during that time, or what?
No. Uh, what we would project, uh, as of right now, is to let the baseball continue through Memorial Day, and then shut down the park for the spring, excuse me, for the summer 2014 season, the fall 2014 season, and the spring 2015 season. As we speak, I'm actively working with surrounding communities to see if we can parcel out portions of the Hopeful Youth Association group, moving certain age groups to different parks, allowing the Hopeful Youth Association to continue to function as its own separate entity, effectively leasing park space. No one city can support all of the 670 kids who are playing in the spring season. However, we have had very favorable, though not yet completely official response from cities and communities around us who are, we're looking to help us out.
Would it be, I, I guess there'd be additional cost to do that, running space from other places?
Well, there certainly will be some cost associated with running space. Those costs have not yet been determined.
Right.
All right. Sure, ahead, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the master plan for Bell Memorial Park.
Second.
I have a, uh, motion from Councilmember Coats, second from Councilmember Thurmond. For approval, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Adopting the master plan, okay. Uh, City Clerk, please call the next item.
Next item is approval of change order number two to the professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Foresight Group, Inc., for the master planning, public involvement, traffic study, and design of Bell Memorial Park. Agenda item number thirteen, Two-Four-Eight. Mr. Jim Craig.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to first start by addressing, uh, Councilman Lux's concern. Yes, I, I recognize I, uh, could have prepared this by showing what was change order number one. In, uh, and I apologize for that. In March of this year, City Council did approve an initial contract for $54,100 for the first three phases of the design. At the time, that contract contemplated that we would be coming back at the stage we are at now to request additional funding for the construction documents, uh, the construction adminis- administration assistance and bidding administers, I can speak too, bidding assistance as well. And so we didn't ask for the money at the time because we didn't know what it would cost, because we didn't know what the design was gonna be. So we created the initial document and said, "We're gonna ask for the funding for the first three tasks and come back with task four." The first three tasks resulted in an initial design that was completely process-driven, driven on what the public was telling us they wanted. That produced a design that, while it would work, it greatly reduced the amount of green space and greatly increased the amount of, uh, parking and therefore impervious surface in the land. We then went back, and I, change order number one was for approximately $8,500, and, eighty-seven-hundred dollars, excuse me, eighty-seven-hundred dollars. That was to create a second master plan, draft master plan. That draft master plan evolved into what we have here. So that was the purpose of change order number one. Change order number two here addresses all of the concepts we discussed that would be as part of task four, the schematic design, design, development, and construction plans for the construction bid documents, bidding assistance, and construction administration assistance. I would like to point out here, we have, we're creating two optional phases here. I wanna see if we can explore the well that is on the property right now. If that well can be used to provide irrigation for the natural grass fields of the baseball fields, we have an opportunity to reduce a very large, ongoing annual line item, which is watering. Uh, right now, at Bell Memorial Park, we're paying to essentially put the water into the ground. We're paying that to Fulton County. But there is a well, a functioning well, on the property that was acquired. And so we want to explore that and see if we can use that as an opportunity to reduce the operating cost of the park moving forward. With that, if you have any other questions, happy to answer it for you.
Bill?
I'm trying to locate it here in the agreement. Um, for Phase Five and Six, it's contract administration and, uh...
Yes, sir.
We're supposed to, uh, I assume they're on an hourly basis.
Yes, sir.
And the way it reads, they're...
At the city's discretion, these are phases, we, we funded them fully to a not-to-exceed number.
Right.
However, with the assistance of Babaschemi and other resource we have in the city, we may not have to fully tap these resources. We may be able to do these internally. But I didn't want to come back to you with a change order number three. So that's why I put it all in one po- one pile. And the agreement that we have with the Foresight Group is that we may take a portion, or not any portion, of Phase Four and Phase Five.
Yeah, I understand. That's a typical way of doing it. I appreciate that. Uh, just the way it reads, wish I could find it here.
It's on the bottom of page twelve of thirteen.
While he's looking that up, how long do we expect it to take for the design thing? Do you think it'll take until six months?
We believe it's going to take us four months to create the construction documents. And then that gives us two months to go to bid, select a vendor, and then come to council and ask you folks to approve that bid. We are currently on a timeline that we can shut down the park as of Memorial Day.
No, I still can't locate it here, but, uh, the way it reads, you had the change order for three hundred and four thousand, plus the two, uh...
Let me see if I can assist you, sir.
Plus the two unit costs. And it said, uh, the way it read was, uh, it stated the two unit costs, and after the second unit cost, it said, uh, uh, "to be determined on a as-needed basis." But it didn't appear to read that it included both unit costs, just the second one. I think, uh, changing the verbiage in there would, uh...
So I guess what you're asking is the 305-300 for phases one, two, and three, or is that one, two, three, four, and five?
That, that actually covers, if you look at the very first section, uh, Section A, uh, Section Two-O, scope of work, that three hundred and five, uh, $1,300, that includes all eight items. On the very first page.
So does that include four and five, or not, and those eight items?
It includes, uh, Phase Four, if we use, uh, all of their services to the, up to the not-to-exceed number. Phase Five, all the services up to the not-to-exceed number.
Okay. So the 305 is really not-to-exceed number?
Yes, I, but I can't tell you that the whole contract is not-to-exceed. The whole con- most of the contract is a bid, you know, a, a slum sum price. But we have the opportunity with those two not-to-exceed components, as well as Items Seven and Eight, the stick built, uh, maintenance building design, and the well testing if necessary, those are amounts of money we might not have to spend.
So 305 is the amount not to exceed if all...
For the whole, if we use everything, it's the not-to-exceed for the whole thing.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That's why I think we were both unclear. Is, is the 305 not to exceed for the first three, and then you got an hourly amount, four and five, or is it for all of it? I, I wrote it that same way you did, Bill, so.
Well, let me, let me offer up, on page nine of the agreement, capital C, it says is that phases four and five will be billed in accordance with the hourly rate scheduled published by the Foresight Group with a not-to-exceed combined value of $64,000. That's phases four and five only.
But that $64,000 is included in the 305-300 number?
Yes, ma'am.
That's, that's right.
That's correct.
That's correct. But that's the pool for four and five.
So the phases, the other phases are, are less than, the 305-300 minus the 64, and they're a lump sum?
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
So Councilmember Lux, when I looked at the list on page four and five, I almost viewed that as a cafeteria plan, subject to a $64,000 cap.
I don't know if it helps to further clarify. If you look in page one of the document there where it says Section Two Point O, scope of work, compensation, compensation of the agreement is amended by replacing lump sum fee of sixty-two-eight with a not-to-exceed fee of six, three-sixty-eight-one. In essence, what that does is takes that sixty-two-eight and adds it to the increase, which is 305-three. So that's how you get to your not-to-exceed number of three-sixty-eight-one. So I hope that that maybe would show the total project cost of this contract plus two amendments, two change order amendments, that add not-to-exceed a three-sixty-eight, uh, one-hundred.
That's where I'd like to see it in a tabular format, so. And, uh, you have a trail of, uh, change orders, starting off with the base contract.
Okay, so what you're looking for is more of a formatting issue?
Right.
Yeah, something that shows phase one price, phase two, phase three, phase four and five are maximum not-to-exceed a set amount.
Gotcha, okay. But that would be something that you're looking more of a format issue on contracts globally as opposed to this specific contract.
Right, use a standard AIA change order form.
That makes sense.
Karen?
Kennedy, let's, uh, we'll, we'll take that back to, uh, Mr. Hingby, who designs most of our contracts. Yeah, we can, we can do that very easily. We can come up very easily with that, yeah.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion to approve change, change order number two, Agenda Item Thirteen, Two-Four-Eight.
Second.
Okay, I've got a, uh, motion from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Coats. For approval, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. City Clerk, call the next new business item.
Next item is consideration of a waiver of conflict, affirmatively waiving any actual potential or apparent conflict of interest arising from or attributable to Gerard and Davis, LLP's simultaneous representation of Milton and Cherokee in the preparation of an automatic aid and mutual aid agreement between the city of Milton and Cherokee County to provide supplemental fire suppression and emergency services for the city of Milton and Cherokee County. Agenda item number thirteen, Two-Four-Nine. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, uh, seems like a perfect storm lately of just these instances that have come up. There's actually one even later. And it's just a peculiarity of this work that if you do represent multiple jurisdictions, if you do this right, these are gonna come up. And so they do, and, uh, you're gonna hear the next agenda item. Chief Edgar is gonna get up and talk about a mutual aid agreement between the city of Milton and Cherokee County. Of course, that makes perfect sense for a whole host of reasons. Uh, my law firm does represent both jurisdictions, and so out of an abundance of caution, uh, we do need to bring this waiver to you, just like we did with the PFA, and just like what we've done with a few of these. Uh, just so I can, number one, fully disclose, uh, be as transparent as I can be, tell you that I can represent both jurisdictions very zealously with respect to this, uh, mutual aid agreement. There's nothing the least bit controversial in this agreement. Uh, and hopefully you will approve this waiver, uh, and therefore I can have that for my file. Let me know if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions on that?
And just, just Mr. Mayor, so you'll know Cherokee is approving the same thing.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I think you just, he's getting too popular now.
He's able to bill both of us at the same time.
We already discussed, we discussed that earlier. There's no...
We want you to pick one or the other, right now.
Like you both.
Look, get your computer out, you're billing. All right, let us, uh, open up for a motion.
Mayor, I've, uh, moved that we approve consideration of a waiver of conflict, affirming, uh, affirmatively waiving any actual potential apparent conflict or of interest arising from or attributable to Gerard Davis, LLP's simultaneous representation of Milton and Cherokee, uh, et cetera. Agenda item number one-three-two-four-nine.
I'll second it.
All right, I've got a motion by Councilmember Longoria, second by Councilmember Thurmond. Any discussion for approval? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, City Clerk, please call the next one.
Next item is consideration of an automatic aid and mutual aid agreement between the city of Milton and Cherokee County to provide supplemental fire suppression and emergency services for the city of Milton and Cherokee County. This is Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Two-Five-O. Chief Bob Edgar.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, what we have here tonight is an automatic aid agreement with Cherokee County. Um, and I've asked David to put up a map that'll indicate the areas of the, um, automatic aid area. Um, it, it's a little bit different than what we have with Alpharetta in our automatic aid agreement with them, is this agreement here limits the city of Milton going into Cherokee County by five road miles from Fire Station Forty-Three and Fire Station Forty-One. And that coincides with ISO. So we, we create a benefit to, or a possibility of a benefit to our, our ISO rating, because this adds additional resources to any structure fire that we have within the city of Milton. It adds additional resources, as well as those resources go into Cherokee County as well. It's limited to one engine company from Station Forty-Three, depending on the area, as you can see on the north end, and, or one engine company going into the, um, kind of the southwest corner by Station Forty-One. So, so those, um, any, anytime there's a structure fire response, uh, we would automatically send one engine company into those areas, and then Cherokee County would, would utilize that resource for any, um, structure fires. And in the event that there's nothing, then they would go ahead and cancel the unit, will come back. And, and on the return, Cherokee County would send an engine company into any structure fire we have, which then adds additional resources to any, any event that we may have. And it, it's just an added benefit, um, to both sides. Um, we benefit both from possibility of ISO credits for having additional resources, as well as having those additional personnel on scene in the event of a, a major fire. And just to give you an idea of those particular areas... And just to give you an idea of those particular areas, in 2013 to date, from January to date, Cherokee County's had 26 structure fires in those areas. And that does not mean that they were working structure fires, but they were some type of structure fire response, so that's where that unit would start to move into that area. And then, if it wasn't needed, it would be canceled. And then, in 2012, there were 30 structure fires reported in those particular areas, and mainly, those were up in the north end by Station 43. That was where the, the, most units or, or the most structure fires were called in for. But again, they, they were not necessarily working structure fires. The, the other, the other piece of this is that, under an automatic aid agreement, we automatically dispatch, they're automatically dispatched any structure fire, but if there's any additional resources needed beyond those five road, five road miles from Station 41 or 43, they would have to come in through a mutual aid request. And then, if we had the units available to go ahead and respond, we would, and, and the same thing on our end. If we had a, an event further within the city of Milton that we needed additional resources or some type of special equipment from Cherokee County, then we could go ahead and put a request in for that, and if it was available, then they would go ahead and send it. It's pretty much the same way as any state, we're, we're part of the mutual aid group within Georgia, the state of Georgia, so if we had a special request, then we would make that request to the particular municipality or organization to send that piece of equipment and personnel if they had it available to us. Any questions?
Bill?
How were the boundaries determined?
They're based on road miles, they, and that's how ISO establishes credit for a particular fire station or resource that's coming from a fire station, it's based on road miles. So, the areas that you see, like Milton is all in the blue or the darker color, those are five road miles from Station 43 on the north end into Cherokee County, and then you'll see the red lines coming into Milton, those are five road miles from their station, Station 32, coming into Milton. And it, there's a breakdown there of the streets and all, and what actually areas it does cover. The, the streets on Cherokee responding into Milton, there's 59 streets where there's 117 of us, or Cherokee streets that we would be going into that are covered within those five road miles. But I think it makes sense to have, to have this partnership, because we have such a large border with Cherokee County, and again, it, it goes beyond just the automatic aid, it goes into a mutual aid agreement, which will also include training, and they have a brand-new training facility out there that we will be part of this agreement, where we're allowed to go out there and train with them and utilize that facility. So, again, it, it's just another benefit to the program.
Yeah, I mean, is there any, you think it may be negative? I mean, that's, this is a win-win for...
I, I believe this is just another win-win, similar to what we have with Alpharetta, but this, this is limited to structure fire responses. This would not have to do with EMS calls or anything like that. We wouldn't be called in for those kind of things, and same thing, we wouldn't call them in. It would be strictly structured fire responses, putting additional resources and personnel on scene.
And realistically, we're talking a couple times, two or three times a month?
If that, yeah. Again, they would cancel us, that, we would be the first ones canceled in the event that it turns out to be something very minor that they can handle, or nothing at all.
Plus, I'm sure, you know, it's good for our guys and their guys, and you learn a little different, you know, new stuff, and help each other out.
Absolutely, I mean, like I said, it goes beyond the resource of firefighting, it goes into training and sharing information, sharing training ideas and all of that.
You know, I've always thought it's been really neat since we've become a city, and we guys got our public safety up and running, you know, before, it was almost like, it's okay, Fulton County's one big county, you guys take care of your own stuff, we're over here, you're here. It's kind of neat to see how, all of a sudden, you know, everybody works together, and we're all, it's like, take care of your little brother here, your brother, big brother here, our family.
Right, this almost closes the gap between Milton and having some type of resource coming from any direction. We already have an agreement with Forsyte County under a mutual aid agreement, and what we call it the 400 Club, and it's not really a club, but what it is, is resources along the 400 corridor. So, we're, we are able to call any of those additional resources in by just making one simple call to the, to this, those departments, and they'll send whatever you need. So, now we've closed the gap with Alpharetta, and now we have Cherokee County. So, I think we're well protected at this point.
Good work.
Yep. All right, Mr. Mill, you want to go ahead?
I'll move to approve an automatic aid and mutual aid agreement between the city of Milton and Cherokee County to provide supplemental fire suppression and emergency services for the city of Milton and Cherokee County, agenda item number 13-250.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Luss, second by Councilmember Coons. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, Suti. All right, Suti, if you'll call this next item, number six.
Next item is consideration of a third amendment to an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Milton, Georgia, and the city of Johns Creek, Georgia, for the provision of information technology services. This is agenda item number 13-251. Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor, council, good evening. This is a, the contract portion of what we talked about during the budget process, where we talked about the restructuring of our IT deployment by bringing another aspect of the House, but remaining with a IGA for GIS services. That's what this amendment to the IGA does, it just puts into a framework exactly what we talked about in the budget process. This will have us reducing the scope of work that we have, I guess, out to Johns Creek at this point. We still would have some opportunity to contract with them on a daily basis if we all of a sudden had a crisis and they've needed to be out for a period of time or on vacation at our request, we can call over and buy IT services on a daily basis, so it's really kind of the best of both worlds. We have the shared GIS on a .3 basis, which is about what we need, .3 FTE, and then we also have the opportunity to backfill if we need it. So, this contract memorializes what we talked about during the budget process. This contract is a bit different, this IGA is a bit different than what was published in your packet, although substantively it is identical, very, very close. There was some difficulty last week getting this IGA out of the Johns Creek City Attorney's Office on any type of a timely basis, I'm a little bit busy over there right now, so, you know, we got it as best we can. This is agreed upon, documented by staff in Johns Creek, they will take this up tonight as well, and when they get to that point in their meeting. So, if we approve it and they approve it tonight, this will be a binding document.
Bill?
Yeah, this is one of the similar things I saw in Forsyte's contract, and it's in Article Four, compensation and consideration, and the second line starts out, she'll pay to Johns Creek $3,403 per month, plus, when requested, a daily charge of $5.25 for tier two IT services and $653 IT services. Perhaps if you insert the word respectively after the second services, it might make it a little clearer, that both of those amounts are daily charges and not just the first one.
I'd have to defer to Ken on that.
I understand your point.
Thank you.
At this point, I would beg your indulgence that if that's not legally killing, let's, let's not modify this document, that we had a hard time getting this one in our hands.
Agreed.
We can modify going forward.
Ken, you comfortable with that?
I, I am, I understand, I understand Councilmember Luss's point, I think that both parties have immediate bonds on it, but I understand the point made.
That's something we can take care of, move forward, but it's not going to repeat us.
No, it won't kill me.
All right, anybody else? David, how many points are you? A point three, point four? Just kidding, just kidding. Are you a 1.3?
Dave's a 1.4 functioning as a 1.0, but unless Councilmember Longoria can't get on the internet, then he's functioning at 0.8. That may have changed today, though, are you on?
It's been nice all day.
It has.
He figured it out.
All right, any other questions? If not, all for motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the consideration of a third amendment to an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Milton, Georgia, and the city of Johns Creek, Georgia, for the provision of information technology services, agenda item number 13-251.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay.
And I guess I'll ask for Ken's, Ken's help. Nope, I won't. Mr. Suti, if you'll call the next item.
Consideration of a sublease and option to purchase between the city of Milton, Georgia, and Fulton County for the Northwest Fulton Fire Station, located at 750 Hickory Flat Road, Milton, Georgia. Agenda item number 13-252. Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor, council.
Oh, boy.
Powerful tonight.
Mayor, council, this is a sublease with an option to purchase that took a long time in the making between the city of Milton and Fulton County. We've been working for almost a year now, trying to come up with a document that both parties can agree upon that would allow us to continue to rent Fire Station 43 and underlying 44 acres of parkland that secures the debt issuance that happened prior to the city of Milton. And what we tried to create was a document that would give Milton some guarantee that in 2019, October 2019 specifically, that when the debt would be officially retired on the fire station and the land, that Milton would have the option to purchase, essentially saying that the amounts that we were paying from now up until 2019 are going towards the acquisition of the facility and not just simply a rental payment. My biggest fear was that we'd all of a sudden get to 2019, and somebody at the Fulton County Commission would have a cute moment and decide that the building was just essentially rented from them and that it had a fair market value, and that they would want us to go get an appraisal and rebuy it a second time. Now, kind of tongue-in-cheek say cute moment, but those, that concept had been brought up when we started the process of moving through, getting this document in place, so that we didn't have to worry about that. What this document does is it specifies a payment schedule, it's one that we're budgeted for, it's one we knew about, candidly, it's one we provided to them because they couldn't find it, and we've got this document now so that when the debt is retired in 2019, we have the first option, if we want to acquire, we have the option to acquire for $10. So, that gives me comfort that we're not going to end up buying this building or the land twice, and it also gives me some comfort that we can officially guarantee ownership in the future. This document has already been adopted by the Fulton County Board of Commissioners, so if you all adopt it tonight, it is a binding document, and it will be the lease that would guide us through until 2019, when we can take official ownership of that building from the Fulton County's facilities and corporation. This has been through legal review, been through bond council review, took a little bit to get it done, but I really think that this is an important thing for Milton, to guarantee that this roughly two-plus-million-dollar asset becomes ours in 2019 without additional dollars having to be spent towards it. Happy to answer any questions.
Bill?
Now, this is 44 acres here, is that the last of all of the parcels that make up the 203 or the 206 acre?
That is the remaining land, yes, sir.
And we're able to use that property in the meantime? We're basically paying them rent and...
Yes, this document even helps further that, that, you know, we, it, the document specifies the types of uses that we can enjoy there, one of which is intended to be institutional use in the form of firefighting, the other is governmental-type use on parkland, so we're a whole lot more comfortable having, right now, we're really kind of tenants at will, because our lease expired and we couldn't get Fulton County to adopt a new one, so they weren't kicking us out and we weren't leaving, but, and there is some basis for being a tenant at will, so it wasn't as though we were illegally occupying the structure, but it was risky that in 2019, I didn't want the likes of a certain commissioner to decide we needed to buy it again. This will allow us now, this gives us, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable now, when the air conditioner breaks, we'll fix the air conditioner, and I'm comfortable that, you know, if the refrigerator goes out, we'll replace the refrigerator, because I don't mind maintaining an asset that I know that is going to be maintained to our specification, our standard, our ownership one day, but if all of a sudden we got to 2019 and they said, sorry, guys, you got to buy it again, I wasn't really interested in seeking a lot of money to it.
And if we wanted to start developing that park, somehow or another we had the funds, we could go ahead and do that, because we'd have use of that 44 acres in the middle of it.
Yeah, we would, I would likely paper that if we started to do it, but this document goes a long way towards starting that paper trail. I wouldn't think that this document itself would give us the ability to do some of those things, but we...
We could at least plan it, knowing that it wasn't going to have a big donut in the middle of our park.
That is correct, yep, that is correct. This, this will guarantee in October of 2019, this debt, Fulton County assures me this debt is not going to be refinanced, it's been refinanced a couple of different times, but it's close enough to be retired at this point that it'll pay off and then we'll enter the structure.
So, I didn't read all the way through it. Is there an early payment clause in there, or is it?
Is there penalty? Is there other... No, there's not, although, in going through with the bond council, I don't know that even an early payment would allow them to transition the ownership prior to October 2019, so it's one of those that we'll likely just adhere to the payment schedule, because I don't know that an early payment buys us anything.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just one, just one clarification, the actual, we are, when you adopt this agreement, you are adopting an option. The option has to be triggered in the future to have the right to then buy it down. That's what the city manager was referencing, we're having to pay $10 additional consideration for that option. I will say, there is a form of an asset purchase agreement that you're also approving tonight, that we've already approved. It anticipates we would own the property of closing prior to December 31st of 2019. The final purchase payment for that is $9,000.
$5,000 for the building and $100 in the bank, no worries, we understand that. That's been consistently implied amongst all the other properties that we've acquired.
I'd like to donate the $10 right now to seal the deal.
Okay. Yeah?
I guess I'll make a motion, if anyone else has anything to ask. It's quiet. All right, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item number 13-252.
Second.
Got a motion for approval, Councilmember Coons, second, Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. City clerk, please call the next one.
Final item this evening is consideration of a conflict waiver regarding Jordan Davis LLP's representation of the city of Milton in relation to the Second Amendment to an IGA and sublease agreement, agenda item number 13-253. Mr. Ken Gerard.
So sorry, this is the other side of the PFA conflict that you all just adopted at the earlier PFA meeting, members of the council, and again, this just pertains to the Second Amendment to the sublease, that hopefully we're going to adjourn this meeting and go back to the PFA meeting, reconvene that meeting, and discuss that, that Second Amendment to the lease. I do need a motion to invoke them.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 13-253.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
So, are you going to try to trigger, I'm sorry, Mr. R, are you going to try to trigger something now that causes us to suspend the council meeting and go back to a PFA meeting?
You know, that's, we don't need to do that, we could, in fact, if you'd like to go ahead and enter into executive, which you have an executive session, go ahead and go back, come back out here, and then go ahead and adjourn your regular meeting, and then...
And go back.
Yeah, that, that makes more sense procedurally.
Okay. All right, I'll open up for motion to move...
I didn't have one staff report tonight, but I've had some steps to prepare, could we do that real quick?
Yeah.
We've got an update on Crab Apple Fest. Peyton hung with us, we're going to run it to the hall.
You know what? If you don't mind, Councilmember Hewitt would like for McCravat, Peyton and I to wait till after the executive session and everything.
Everybody else go ahead.
Just kidding.
First off, I just wanted to say thank you very much for your time tonight, I know it's been a long meeting, you got more to do, but we just wanted to give you some good news and some of the, the follow-up on Crab Apple Fest, and let you know what a, what a successful event it really was. First off, I just want to say the attendance, we believe, was somewhere in the, like, 12,000 to 15,000, which was, yeah, which was pretty good. We really, really were happy with the attendance. The feedback we've received so far, Peyton's going to tell you a little bit more about the feedback, but it's been overwhelmingly positive. I can say day of, I honestly did not have anybody say a bad thing. Most people came up and said, I love the layout, I think this is fantastic, I'm having a great time, and the feedback from the vendors is, like I said, been overwhelmingly positive. And just, I just wanted to, while I'm up here, thank our partners in the Crab Apple Community Association, especially Peyton, Amanda, and Lisa, who is not here, but they put in a tremendous amount of work to make this event go off as smoothly as it did, and they really, really deserve to be commended. I'd also like to thank Public Works, Carter, Roddy, and Matt, they did a fantastic job as well for the shutting down two roads, which was a very big project. We had fire and police there as well, and both of them helped out in numerous ways, strategic and tactical, I think. Strategic and tactical, actually. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I was really happy with the way this turned out because I think that this can really be our thing. I think this can be our thing now. You know, Alpharetta can have the Taste of Alpharetta, Decatur can have the Book Festival. We've got this, this Crab Apple Fest now. Fits our brand, it shows off the city really well to people. And, and I think it, it went as well as it could possibly go for the first year. So with that, I want to turn the floor over to Peyton and then I'm going to turn it over to Angela, and if I can, real quick, before she comes up, I don't want to steal any of her thunder, but I just wanted to point out that we had budgeted twenty-eight thousand dollars for this event. Angela made it come in at seventeen thousand and she raised nearly thirty thousand dollars in sponsor dollars and in-kind donations. So truly an unbelievable effort. Thank you.
You might need to roll over for next year, right?
You forgot to thank yourself, Jason. We've been meeting with Jason and Angela since January about, about this event and it was awesome. As far as the CCA's perspective, our total income, our gross income was eleven thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. That's from all vendor fees and one sponsorship. And our net income was seven thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. And so what we do with that money is that helps us for our operating costs for the year. We usually have a one, one thousand dollar scholarship for a Milton senior and then we put on events like the July Fourth Parade, Christmas and Crab Apple, and a couple other smaller events. And what we will also most likely be doing going forward is allocating some of those funds to a long-term capital-type project in Crab Apple so we can save and give back to the community. So that's where the money goes. We were thrilled with the turnout, it was the highest ever. At least it's been going on since the sixties and before that, so we were thrilled.
Angela?
Jason did steal my thunder a little bit. I was just going to tell you all about the, the dollar amount we projected to spend twenty-eight thousand on the event based on, this is our first time doing it and combining the Milton Roundup with the Antiques Festival. And we were fortunate enough to get over that amount donated, which was pretty huge. People really wanted to support this event and we had such generous community partners. Over twenty groups came together to help us with this. And we actually didn't really talk about our volunteers that we had for this event. We had over eighty, is that correct? Eighty, and does that even include the moms? So we had a Young Men's Service League that really helped out with the event and many other community groups, but we could not have done it without them and I just wanted to point out that. So, thank you.
You know, I, I just want to, well, reiterate and thank everybody that was involved, from volunteers to the association and the other groups that helped out and our city staff and just, you know, citizens and everybody. It, you know, what's really neat about it, this is the kind of thing, and as we see the evidence of this, it's growing every year. It's better every year. This is the, this is kind of what the intangible of having our own city is versus just being part of the county. So obviously every day, a lot of our work and our staff is the bricks and sticks of just running a city. But the really neat thing is this is the intangible or tangible that really I think some of our citizens can feel and, you know, it's a feeling, not a, not a material thing, but just, you know, we're part of a community. We have great events and we want to be there and we're proud of our community. So thank you all for everything you guys do.
I want to say thank you also. I thought that we had some great vendors, it sounded like that they were actually selling stuff, so they'll want to come back. I think everyone that was there really enjoyed it, especially like the Superior Plumbing porta-potties that don't look like porta-potties. Those were very, very nice. People don't, actually didn't mind using those because they have sinks in them. So I thought it was a great event and very well attended. And I, I think you're right, I think it can be our event going forward.
Mayor?
And, well, I don't want to steal anything, but as a member of the, president of the Friends of Milton Library, we just thank you for letting us be a part of that as well. And for the future library, we raised about eighteen hundred dollars too. So it just worked out very well for everybody and just thank you for everybody's work.
Okay. Anybody else?
Two quick things before we go into executive session.
No one mentioned that I wasn't there, did they?
Your mother was there representing you.
No one noticed I wasn't there, did they?
I did.
I did.
All right, go ahead, Chris.
If you get an opportunity to check your emails, hopefully many of you saw the lengthy one of this morning. I'd be interested in your feedback if you would do that individually instead of collectively at some point later this week so I have some idea of how to proceed.
Thanks Peyton and Amanda.
Thank you.
Sorry.
And, no, no, that's fine. And, and two, you know, I got here a little bit late, appreciate you allowing me to go play a little bit of baseball. We won ninety-two, so it was a good night. And I got here and I jumped up real quick and ran out the door, but the phone rang and, because that was our attorney who was representing us in the sales tax negotiation. That's not a phone call you like to see if it's up to forty-four at night on a Monday, but all is well and no change there. But I want to bring up, just throw back in your head that I think we're probably getting close to where we need to look towards. We were going to do it October the fifth, we probably need to look towards a date where we start to now have some of those discussions. There's really not a lot that could happen at this point that could adversely affect us. There's still a couple of things out there that, that could, so I don't want to, I don't want to represent to you that we're, that we're done. But I guess I'd like to get a feel from you as we start to move into the end of October, early November. We'll be into the middle of Thanksgiving and Christmas and all that good stuff right away. Do you want to be bothered with this during these next sixty days? Or would you rather, do you want me to start to look for a date now or do you want me to wait until after the first of the year? The earliest we would even start to see a different distribution is probably February first of next year. So we do have a little bit of time, I just kind of want to get, get your feelings of how, how bothered you'd like to be with it in the next sixty days. Makes no difference to me, I kind of like to be bothered with it, but...
I'd like to go ahead and start looking at things.
Okay.
I think it's an exciting thing to do, so.
Okay, so I'll start to put some dates together and we'll wait until Rick is sworn in, in the middle of November. If you think that's a good idea, go ahead and involve him right at the very beginning. Probably wait till after he's in, but, good, that's what I have. We'll save, we're going to call this executive session now. If Ken's good with it, I'd like, instead of calling land acquisition, let's go into executive session to discuss real estate. We're going to be a little bit different now.
All right, do I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss real estate?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. So, uh, I have a motion and a second, we can convene the meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Move to adjourn the regular meeting.
No, no, that's unanimous, now I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?